Okay, I'm going to call this regular city commission meeting of Monday, March 17th. To order, all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public. My nation, the people, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have steered this land through the generations. Thank you for your resilience and strength in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. And Benjamin, I will hand it over to you now for roll call.
Yes, and good evening, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Stanley.
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell.
Here.
Commissioner Werner.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
Here.
And Mayor Shamro.
Here.
All right, and I'm actually going to ask for an agenda amendment here on new business, swapping one and two. This was our mayor Protem has a, you've got a housing conference?
Yes, so I may need, depending on how long some of these agenda items go, I may have to leave early, and so I would like to at least make it for that one.
Great. Is there any objection to changing the agenda? Okay, seeing none. And then I also wanted to let everyone know, both on our commission and in the public, that Commissioner Stanley is here, completely except with her voice. I know, our mics are not on, guys, I don't know who can help with that, but I didn't think so when I talked into it originally. But in the meantime, I will project a little bit more, and in the spirit of that, Commissioner Stanley has laryngitis, so she is here in everything but voice. She'll write down a note if there's anything massive, but if you're wondering why, if she's not actively participating in the conversation, that is why this evening. So with that, as soon as we have, Benjamin's now going to put our consent calendar on hold for a moment while we try to get our mics working. Do we think we have it fixed?
Yes.
Okay.
It's fixed.
Okay, so then I will hand it over to you, Benjamin, for the consent calendar, please.
Yes, the purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public can ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed from it and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission, and such requests will be automatically respected. If an item isn't removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Item one, consideration of approving the minutes of the March 3rd and March 10, 2025 meetings of the City Commission, approval recommended. Item two, consideration of enacting an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances to reduce the number of members on the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors from 12 to nine, enactment recommended. Item three, consideration of approving a management agreement for Veterans Memorial Park with Grand Traverse Veterans Coalition for shared maintenance and operations, approval recommended. Item four, consideration of authorizing a three-year maintenance agreement for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning services for the Larry C. Hardy parking garage and the Old Town parking garage, approval recommended. Item five, consideration of authorizing a contract for sidewalk construction project at Eastern Avenue, approval recommended. Item six, consideration of authorizing an agreement for construction engineering services for the West Side Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and consideration of authorizing a construction agreement for the West Side Sewer Rehabilitation Project, approval recommended. Item seven, consideration of authorizing an amendment to the consultant agreement for construction engineering services related to the galvanized water services replacement project, approval recommended. Item eight, consideration of authorizing a budget amendment to increase the Old Town Tiff's contribution to the Hannah Park overlook by an additional $4,000 for a total contribution of $109,000, and consideration of authorizing an amendment to the contract for the work, approval recommended. Item nine, consideration of authorizing a confirming purchase order for unleaded gasoline for city operational use, approval recommended. Item 10, consideration of authorizing a purchase order for a V-Box spreader with liquid applicator for the Streets Division, approval recommended. Item 11, consideration of adopting to make permanent a traffic control order which provides for clarification on parking locations on the east side of South Oak Street, south of West Front Street, approval recommended. Item 12, consideration of adopting to make permanent a traffic control order which provides for a yield sign at the northeast corner of 17th Street and Arnold Court, approval recommended. And finally, item 13, consideration of authorizing the Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefit Act application for waiver-defined benefit pension retirement systems, and adoption of the resolution authorizing an additional contribution to MERS in fiscal year 2024-2025, adoption recommended.
Is there any item a commissioner would like pulled? Go ahead, Commissioner Shaw.
I have a comment on five, I don't know if I would need to pull it.
If you just have a quick comment, you can go ahead.
I watch, I live over there, I watch pedestrians and runners and high school students go down the left side of Eastern Avenue heading towards Peninsula Drive every day, and they take that corner on Peninsula Drive, and there's, they go nowhere. And this is not solving that problem. So I hope engineering figures out some way to control the traffic, because the traffic coming up Peninsula Drive does not slow down to take that right-hand turn on Eastern Avenue. They take it right on the corner there, and it's just a terror, it's a tragedy waiting to happen.
Okay.
I'd also like to pull 13.
Pull 15 or 13?
13.
13, thank you. Okay, any others? Go ahead, Jackie.
I have very quick questions on six, seven, and 10.
Okay, six, seven, and 10. Any others? Seeing none, would any member of the public like to pull any item from the consent calendar excluding 13, six, seven, and 10? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as amended.
Support.
Okay, thank you, Werner and Treadwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll start with item 13, and you had this pulled, Heather?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Remember to pull your mic down, I just know that sometimes.
About how this became underfunded, it's kind of like getting a notice in the paper that said, or in your mailbox that says "Cancellation" in red.
It's not that.
So I was just wondering.
So this is, not sure, this was, I brought this to you last year as well, so this is something that we've been getting, looking in the history, we've had it historically in the past, and it has to do with the percentage funding versus the benefits. As the benefits go up, we have to, and the, we're getting really close, I think we're at like 57% is where it's at.
And it's supposed to be at 60, is that right?
60 is the minimum. Yeah, but it's nothing new, this is, like I said, this is what we're required to do for the state to ask for the waiver. But as far as the benefits go, it's, the pension is calculated by Gabriel Roder based on the benefits, as wages increase, those benefits increase, which then we have our ARC, our annual required contribution that we pay, but it's just keeping pace with the increases that we've had over the last couple of years.
So you're saying that this happens all the time, because as wages increase, benefits increase, and so you're constantly reevaluating every year?
And the ARC is supposed to keep up with it, but it's always, we're based on the 2023 year, so they're always behind in calculating, so these additional contributions will help us get that caught up, is the hope and plan.
Thank you.
And just as a heads up, because this does come up every year since it was pulled, this is something that in the future we're planning to get, try to get much more above that 60% mark as well, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, 75% funded in the next nine to 10 years is the plan.
That's our goal.
Okay.
It's a good goal.
Perfect. Thank you. Unless, are there other questions, or could I get a motion, please?
I can't find it.
Let's see.
I move that the city manager be authorized to execute the Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefit Act application for waiver-defined benefit pension retirement systems, and further that the resolution authorizing an additional contribution to municipal employees' retirement system, MERS, in fiscal year 2024 be adopted.
Support.
I second.
Thank you, I'll give that to Anderson, you ran the last one, Tim, so I'll spread it around. Any other comments on this? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back, all in favor?
I think there is a public comment.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, if you can approach the podium.
We're just having a discussion.
Thank you, okay.
And from that, I propose.
Okay, so.
Okay, well, we'll try to get that addressed.
Okay, in the meantime, everybody up here, let's not talk cloud, yeah, just clearly, let's speak loudly. So that said, bring you back to the commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we're on to item number six now, and Commissioner Anderson, you had this pulled because you had a quick question, you said?
Yes, a quick question, please. I was rather surprised to see a 25% contingency, and just wondered what the rationale was for that.
Hi, Art Krieger, Director of Utilities with the city. That's a great question. Since the bid came in fair amount lower than the budgeted amount, we wanted to allow room in this project to do more. So if we feeling like we have a good price, and we do what we put out to bid, and we have time in the project and other areas that we want to address with lining sewers, and we have a handful that we're already looking at doing, gives us the ability to do that with the funds that were allocated in the current budget.
Thank you.
Sure, just one more thing, there are some unknowns out there, obviously underground, anything can happen, but a lot of our video surveillance of these pipes is from 2015 and that era, so they could have had, you know, more damage since then, and if we find a collapsed pipe that we can't say line, we may have to dig up a spot and replace a piece, so we wanted to have ample money in there to do that as well.
Thanks.
Though even within the potential increase in scope of work, we're still operating within the original budget for this project.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion?
Can I make the motion?
Sure, great, yeah.
I move that the mayor and city clerk execute an agreement with Hubble, Roth, and Clark in the amount not to exceed $83,695 for construction engineering services related to the West Side Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, with such agreement subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney, with funds available in the sewer fund 590, and further that the mayor and city clerk execute an agreement with Performance Pipelining, Inc., PPI, in the not to exceed amount of $1,129,112, which includes a 25% contingency, with such agreement subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney, with funds available in the sewer fund 590.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, and Art, you don't have to go too far, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, this was also one you had a quick question on, Commissioner Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, and it's for Art again. Is this the end of the galvanized replacements? Will we see another year of extension, or is this going to be it?
We will see more, so this won't be the end. I did forward an email or reply to some questions about this earlier today with Liz, and I think it was forwarded to the commissioners, excuse me, but the rough numbers are after this project, we'll do 130, then we have about 180, funding for another 180, and I don't have these numbers in my head, and I didn't bring that paper with me, but that brings it down to about 140 left that we know of for sure that need to get replaced. So that we're fine, going through the records with a fine-tooth comb, hopefully we can weed out some more that we don't need to do, but current records, I believe, is in the 450 range that are left. So between this project taking out 130, 180, way of funding with the earmark fund that came from the state, we can do about 180, and that leaves about 140.
Good, thank you.
If you do an estimate on dollars required that aren't quite funded yet, it would be in the neighborhood of $1.5 million. They're running around 10,000 apiece, so.
Okay, that helps.
Thank you. Okay, other questions? Well, Art's up there, or I will take a motion, although I do see her taking notes, Jackie, go ahead.
I move that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute an amendment to the 2023 contract with Hubble, Roth, and Clark, HRC, in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for additional work on the galvanized water services replacement project, such amendment subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney, with funds therefore available in the water fund 591.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Werner. Any other comments on this? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and finally, item number 10, you had this pulled as well, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Also a quick question or a long, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, you don't have to qualify it.
I think it'll be a quick question, it's really for future action. Is Frank, Frank here?
Yep.
Great. I intend to vote in favor of this, I think it's a great technology, and I'm really excited about what it may do for, to reduce our use of salt on the roads. From the proposal, it looked as though this may be the first of future similar equipment to be acquired, if this works well, and my question was, is there a plan in place to track the performance so that those future decisions are easy to make?
Sure, great question, and thank you for asking it. This is one of two that were ordered, two vehicle trucks that were ordered about a year and a half ago that came in late fall, that were ordered with the hydraulic capability to be upfitted for a unit like this. So this is our first crack at it, to be able to use either fully liquid application or a granular mix with liquid application, so absolutely, the, one of the reasons that we're really happy about this product is it's pretty, fairly similar to the way we track our salt use now, so every time this vehicle hits the road, we can, the idea is to allow us a little bit of latitude, so that if it does have to be used elsewhere, it can be used elsewhere, but on the pilot road surface that we want to keep accurate track of, we can only use liquid application, and it can track just when the liquid comes out rather than granular too. So the idea is to use all that data and see if it's working, if we're getting the same level of service, and then decide on making more purchases like this.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Heather.
Would you agree that the snow that we got yesterday was system snow rather than lake effect?
No.
It was on the map, it was coming across the country, so that would make it system snow?
Yes, that came from a system.
So this spreader would allegedly allow you to pre-treat the streets with this low-salt spray?
With a complete liquid application instead of putting down rock salt mixed with a beetroot, so.
Did you use any salt yesterday?
I do not believe we did. I asked the same question to staff, and they did, there were some folks in last night to check, to be aware of the road conditions. If they did, it might have been minor at intersections, but the only time we really are putting salt down is when those temperatures and the road conditions reflect safety issues. So I couldn't tell you exactly if any of those trucks, how much they put down right standing here, but I can find out the information for you if you'd like.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll take a motion, or any other questions? Or do we have a motion? No, we don't have a motion on this one.
I'll be happy to move.
Thank you, Jackie.
I move that Garage Equipment 206 Monroe spreader be declared a surplus, and additionally, that the city manager be authorized to issue a purchase order to Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boyne Falls, Inc., for one V-Box spreader with liquid application system in an amount not to exceed $50,765.49, with funds available in the Garage Fund 661.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioners Anderson and Treadwell. Any other questions on this? Or comments? Seeing none, any public comment on this? Go ahead.
And I'll state the rules for public comment this evening, please, if you're willing, state your name and address, indicate if you're a city resident, non-city resident, or a city business owner. We do have a three-minute time allotment, when your time is elapsed, a timer will beep, and we ask that all language be respectful to everyone. Thank you.
Justin Reed, 63, County Drive, Prop. 1B, Traverse City resident. I'd like to remind the city commission that even though that this might reduce salt usage, it pretty much does not matter, because in long term, we might have a very bad winter, and we might have to use more salt. And I'll say this again, I said this last time, unless the city commission can go and predict weather, unless they have Mother Nature in their pocket, I don't think that they know what the outcome of every weather is going to be, some are going to be worse, some are going to be just very warm, and there might not be any salt use, thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring it, or any other, any further public comment, sorry. Seeing none, I'll bring it back, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to old business now, and we're going to start with the contract for construction at West End Beach Parking Lot, and I'll let you start with that, Liz.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. Yes, before you is a, excuse me, a request for approval to execute a contract to repair the West End Beach Parking Lot. This has been before the commission multiple times. The last time it was here before commission for discussion was at a study session on May 13th, and then our city engineer, Anne Pagano, who is standing at the podium, recapped that meeting on June 4th and sent out the design plans for commissioner, final commissioner input, and they incorporated the input as best as they could from that. It's outlined in your memo, all the things that they were able to make changes based on those recommendations. We are looking for a vote today on the plan that is before you.
Thank you, go ahead, Anne.
Good evening, can you hear me okay? Guys hear me all right? Okay. I'm Anne Pagano, city engineer. I know you guys have, most of you have been involved with us since the beginning, but as you know, I've been here about, just over a year, so I wanted to just go through the timeline, not just for you guys, but for the public, just so everyone knows like kind of how we got to where we are today. So as you know, the parking lot, the West End Beach Parking Lot was damaged by high water. I think it started in 2019 and went on through 2020. And then in June of 2022, staff brought to the commission a contract to repair the parking area, and no action was taken that evening. Then, I think a week later, or a month later, sorry, staff came and presented the project at a study session, and then a week later after that, came back again within a contract with some revisions from the previous one, and no action was taken that evening. Then August 21st, 2023, the city received and the commission approved a grant from the Department of Natural Resources to replace the restrooms at West End Beach and install a new restroom near the volleyball court at the RB lot. December 4th, 2023, the commission passed the following motion at the regular commission meeting, that the city manager be directed to issue a request for proposals, which includes generally that the parking be reduced by approximately one-half to provide for ADA parking spots, plant, native plants, natural stone, no geotextile products, and a budget of $200,000. So I just wanted to go through those six items that were included in that motion. The first was that the parking be reduced by approximately half, and the plan that we have this evening has a total of 14 parking places, and it was originally 25. Number two was to provide for ADA parking spots, which we have included four ADA spots compared to the one pre-damage. Plant, native plants, all proposed landscaping will utilize native plants. Number four was natural stone, all the proposed improvements will utilize natural stone. Number five, no geotextile products, there are no geotextile or permanent plastics specified for this project. The project specifications also require the contractor to remove all accessible plastic containing debris from the work area. And then number six was a budget of $200,000, and that was specific to the parking lot, which came in for the bid at about $169,000. In fall 2024, the West End Beach restrooms were demolished by DPS staff, and then March 6th, the construction bids were received for the project, we received four bids, and POP Excavating was the low bid at approximately $352,000, and as I said, approximately $169,000 of that was for the parking lot, with the remainder for the restroom site preparation. I just wanted to say, if the commission approves the contract with the added ADA parking spots and the existing ramp down to the sand in this location, this will be one of the most accessible beaches in the city with the closest ADA access to the beach, and it will make it more resilient for future high-water events. And also, Michelle Hunt, our Parks and Recreation Superintendent, was going to say a couple of things.
Hi, Michelle Hunt, Parks and Recreation Superintendent, thank you, Anne, for that thorough overview. I just wanted to add that the, one of the parts that I have worked on this project is the implementation of the DNR Trust Fund grant for the bathrooms. So the bathrooms are, one of them's actually finished with construction and is ready to ship, and then the other one is almost finished with construction for just another two weeks. So those bathrooms are done, and they're ready to come up to Traverse City, and just kind of wanted to give you an update on where we're at with the grant as it ties into this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Heather?
I have a question for Michelle. So they're constructing the bathrooms as modules in a warehouse, and then shipping them up on a trailer?
Not quite modules, they are, they're pre-cast, so they're actually fully together, and they're going to come on a truck and then be placed with a crane, and then in the contract here, the contractor will hook up the utilities.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
I have a couple of other things to say.
Just going to our others, can we do questions and then a motion before we have a discussion? Going back to our Barry Dunn training last week.
Oh, I have a question.
Okay, great, sorry, I thought yours, okay. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
If the NOAA grant comes through, this is maybe for Anne, what are the plans for that?
Commissioners Deb Allen, Assistant City Manager. In regards to the NOAA grant as part of the Inflation Reduction Act directive that the staff received, we're in the process right now of reviewing this application with LSI, our consultants. So far, they feel very encouraged by the information. This is actually data that had been put together in fall of 2023 that was part of a collaborative grant request, it was about a $49 million grant request. It was not successful, and so we've carved out those components, about $12 million, that were specific to the city and primarily part of city parks and those coastal areas as part of the renovations of those coastal lands. And so we're very encouraged, but this is very preliminary, the grant application will not go into April 16, so I would encourage the board to move forward with this from the standpoint that this will only help our efforts, I think, with the grant application, but again, we are, it's very preliminary right now in terms of the grant itself.
Thank you. One more question?
Mm-hmm.
And just to clarify, I, we're only allowed to ask questions now?
So, based on what was the feedback of Barry Dunn, was parliamentary procedure is questions, and then a motion, and then discussion. So sometimes we have a lot of discussion before we actually have a motion, and it just kind of confuses the order, just to make it clear. So questions, all we want right now, motion, comments, and even further questions if we have them after the motion, is what we're going to try to aim for.
Okay. Okay, final question. The geo, there is geotextile, it is called geotextile on the plans here, but there is geotextile that is fully natural.
It's all natural.
It could be pineapple, or sisal, or coconut, so even the threads, right?
Yep, everything is all natural, yes.
Just making sure, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Tim?
A question, who designed the slope with the riprap, the 25% slope then with the dune grass planted on it in eight inches of sand?
We designed that in-house.
Okay, because that's not going to last the next time the water comes up, like, which might be fine, but we need to be public about it, that this is sacrificial, and we plan to sacrifice it, because dune grass needs something to grow into more than just eight inches of sand on top, and it might not even make it that long, because up against the parking lot, kids. the parking lot, kids and some adults are going to just jump out of the parking lot and run down to the beach right across this. So with a hard surface on a slope underneath it, it's not going to last very long. Do you have, like, plans to, I guess that's the question, do you have plans to keep people off of it, and plans when the water does come back up to try to help keep it in place?
I think we're going to keep an eye on it. I mean, we can always plant more species in the future with help from parks. We've been talking to Michelle actually about doing additional plantings on top of what we're already proposing. So I think we're going to keep an eye on it and see how it, how it works.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So we've been talking about this. This has been an issue for the entirety of my term, and I think we're at a point where we, excuse me?
Years before that.
Yes. And so if you want to help with how to structure this motion, I'm prepared to make it.
I think if you read what's there.
There is a proposed motion. I can read that if you'd like.
Please.
Yeah, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with POP Excavating in the amount not to exceed $387,788.78, which includes a 10% contingency, or $35,253.53, for the construction of the West End Beach Parking Lot and Restroom Preparation, Preparation Project. Such contract subject as to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its firm by the city attorney, with funds available in the Capital Outlay Fund and the MDNR Trust Fund Grant.
Great job.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Well, second that motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Treadwell. All right, and because the motion's on the table, anything goes now. Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be voting against this, and even with sacrificial sand and plants on there, I could accept that. But the main, main thing that's being lost and wasn't included in the detailed explanation given, which is fine, because our current city engineer wasn't here then, is two meetings where no action was taken should be a red flag for the city. That doesn't happen very often, and two meetings on the same topic where no action is taken should raise a lot of questions about what's going on. And one of the main point, and to me, the main point of tension between the city commission at the time and since then, and city manager at the time, interim city manager in between, and I'm not so certain about current city manager, because we've had so many meetings, but the main point of tension was the size of the parking lot, not the number of parking spaces. We directed to reduce the parking lot by half, but that was taken as reduce the number of parking spaces by half, which was not the request. All the discussion was about, this is a park, and yes, certainly at least for ADA, we need parking spaces, but how about we provide park space for people? That was my takeaway from the many discussions we had. And so this proposal reduces the pavement by 6%. Not one half, not 50%, but 6%. So if we actually reduced the pavement amount, there'd be space for picnic tables. We hear people like to pull in there and sit and watch. Well, how about we put picnic tables or benches or whatever it is in park space for people? Again, to me, yes, it's a, it's a different city commission now and a different makeup, and maybe it will pass, but we, it relays back to me to last week's meeting about how we as a body interact with the city manager and the city manager's staff. And again, to me, this is red flags, like there were two meetings with no action over a particular item, and here we are, essentially at 6%. That's, most people aren't going to notice a change in the parking lot size. So I'll be voting no.
Commissioner Treadwell, you had your hand up?
Yes, Commissioner Warner made the comment about a portion being described as sacrificial, and I would like to say that it is very much up to Lake Michigan and what it decides to do in terms of the impact of high water. Yes, we did have a period of higher water a few years ago, but that did not come with significant storms. We do not know if the next high water period will be as high. It might be, we're currently on a downward swing, and we don't know how low it will go. We don't know how high it will go. It's roughly a 20-year cycle. It can fluctuate as much as six feet, but we don't know the bounds of that fluctuation. So the next high water could be a foot and a half below what we experienced in 2019, which would pose no danger at all to this. Or we could have a period like the storm event of Superstorm Sandy, where we had relatively low lake levels, but strong winds out of the north that ended up not causing a lot of erosion, but it did blow sand up onto Grandview Parkway, onto West Front Street, and into our parking lots, which would have, in this case, actually supplanted more sand onto what's being described as sacrificial. So it would have reinforced what's already there.
Thank you, Commissioner Treadwell. Any other, let's go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, I have some more questions, actually.
Great.
If I'm coming up the tart from either direction towards West End Beach Parking, or West End Beach, how do I get through that area?
Dealer's choice.
Same way you do now.
Same way you do now.
No.
Can you repeat that, Commissioner?
So I'm, I'm on the Tart Trail. I'm walking, or I'm biking, going, it doesn't matter, nor east or west, and I come up to this West End Beach parking area. How do I get through there?
So the trail will go on the south side of the parking lot, and then pick up right, so the part of the trail.
So I'm going through the parking lot?
The trail is buffered on both sides with vegetation, the new trail that MDOT is building. So there's the parking lot, and then there's a median, for lack of a better word, and there's vegetation on both sides. The trail's in the middle. So if you're coming from the east, you're going west, you'll, you kind of like dip down a little bit, go along the trail, and then it goes right back up to where the trail currently exists to go all along the west.
Okay, so I'm not actually having to dive into the parking lot and then dive back out again?
Correct.
I'm just crossing the entrance and the exit.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, I'm wondering also, there was a recommendation up here about moving the parking to the parkway side in order to create a sidewalk up there. So if you do have a wheelchair, or if you have children, that you could get safely to the beach accesses on either side. Why was that not acted on?
I add one thing first. The piece, Anne will answer the piece, because about the MDOT with the trail, but I wanted to add that this plan does change the access, the ADA access from those easternmost parking spaces to the bathhouse, and then down into the beach. We made an effort to make sure that that was more accessible, replacing all that concrete and creating an access. So if you're parking in either two of the east ADA parking spaces, there is access for you to get to the bathhouse and then to get down to the beach, as well as you can, we, it's, it's not for wheelchair access, but there are going to be the stone stairs down onto the beach. Then on the west side, there is the existing concrete ramp. So the opportunity for someone to park and have that barrier where they're accessing the ADA, accessing the sidewalk through ADA access, that will be right there from the parking spaces.
But still, if I come in from the east and I park near the bathhouse, and I have a wheelchair, and I'm going to have to go behind all the cars in the parking lot to get to that access down on the west side. But if there aren't any spots, that's what I'm going to have to do, right?
I think so.
Just one last question. What happened to reducing the actual area that Commissioner Warner brought up, reducing the area by half?
Our understanding from the resolution from December 2023 was to reduce the number of parking spaces, not the area. That was not our understanding.
Commissioner Anderson, you had your hand up next.
I did. I, I am struggling with a couple of things. Within the drawings, pages, I think 10 through 12, there was location number two, which looked to me like the, the parking area to the east of the volleyball courts. Is that part of this proposal? Because I,
the numbers, the numbers aren't adding up without there being something else that we
haven't talked about.
Yeah, yeah. So there's two restrooms that are proposed. One is by the West End Beach Parking Lot, and the other one's at the RB volleyball courts. So there's two, two site prep areas that we need to get ready with utilities and the grading and all that, the foundation, so they can place the restrooms.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. So when we're talking about just the West End Beach Parking Lot itself and the restroom prep for that restroom, we've gotten up to 197,000.
It's 169 for the parking lot?
And 28 for the restroom.
So that's about 200 for the total? Yep, that's correct.
Thank you. And, but our, our total, including 10% contingency, is 387,000.
So that's for the other site as well, by the RB parking lot. It should be broken out in that table.
Just for preparing the restroom site, is it? There must be something beyond that if it costs.
There's utilities, yeah, utilities and grading and foundation.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
As we've gone around, I'm going to add in, as Commissioner Treadwell said, this has been around for a few years now, plus, so I think I've been on the whole time. The, after that meeting that we had where I have to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Warner, that the fact this has been brought up two times is a red flag, because we have had a lot of things that have been brought up two times, and what happens is, and I think it's been productive, is we then get feedbacks. We don't make a motion, and staff goes back to work on the feedback that they were given. This isn't, we don't vote for it, or we don't make a motion, and then they come back and present the same project in the same exact way. And the meeting that we had where the interim city manager was still here, as Commissioner Warner alluded to, we actually had a choice, one, two, or sorry, I believe it's A, B, and C. And A had a very prescriptive, no extra stuff, blah, blah, blah. B was all the bells and whistles, and then we all, as a commission, had a discussion, and I believe this was in December of '23, but I could be wrong, about what C would look like. And what we told them with C was, we want some grass, we want some fixtures, we want the parking lot to be different, and we started talking about the ADA access being very unique there. Then when it's also come back, and we talked about it, we didn't talk about, I think one commissioner brought up the size of the parking lot, but most of the commissioners were talking about reducing the parking spots and adding more ADA, and that's what was done, and that's why that was put in that motion. And the motion was very clear and directive because of all the conversations and staff asking for that to be kind of explicitly put out, so that while they worked on it for the next few months, they could bring back what we were looking for. And so while we have the option of, of not going forward with this, you know, we're getting into the time when we'd be looking for bids, we're getting into the time where this NOAA application is avail, is available to us. So, you know, we, we can choose to do something with this now, or we can bring it back next year and, and go on a few more. But I think the issue that we run into, and this happens on every commission, is everybody remembers the one item that was really important to them, or the one thing that they thought. But if two people said it versus seven, or out of five, versus five out of a seven-person panel, that might not have been what rose to the surface for a staff note. If we had, that's why we put it directly in that motion to make that clear. So I think that I would say to the fairness of staff here, staff did what we asked. Now, if we want something else right now, that is our prerogative, and that is our discussion that we can have. But this idea that staff coming to us, taking input, bringing it back in a different duration, taking into that input, and then bringing it back is somehow bad, I don't think that I would agree with that statement, because it's, if it was just coming back to us the exact same way, meeting after meeting, then I would agree. So I just, as somebody who was part of that process, I wanted to add that perspective. Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, I'm echoing that. Yes, there's many metrics that could have been used to say, we want this parking lot to be smaller. We could have said the square footage, we could have said how much of it was asphalt versus impervious pavements versus concrete. We could have said how many parking spaces. We could have said how much specifically ADA parking spaces versus pull-in versus parking spaces that are there right now. What we had chosen to do as a board in the memo is to use the metric of number of parking spaces, which going from 25 to 14 is a reduction of almost half, which is what I recall having been asked for. That does account for the fact that in this design, handicap parking spaces, which were specifically requested, require an area right next to them where somebody can unload a wheelchair, a mobility device, et cetera. So it takes up slightly more space than just a simple parking space. Also, this board, or the commission at the time, said that there should be space for pulling in and dropping stuff off, but not necessarily parking on both east and west ends of this parking lot design. Just past the handicap spaces, there are areas where somebody can pull in, unload coolers, blankets, et cetera, and then pull out to park across the street or at some other area. But to have that pull-in drop-off area still requires some parking space, some pavement that is part of this parking lot, even if it is not a designated parking space. We could have offered other metrics of, as I said, but by the metrics that we presented that staff had to go on, they met our request.
Thank you, Commissioner Treadwell. Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick follow-up on that, is that, to me, though, it gets, gets to communication, and we were reprimanded, I would say, last week for poor communication, that if staff had a question about what it was, didn't have to just look at the motion, the staff could have talked to the city manager, who could have reached out to members of the city commission to get some clarification. It's not that we exist in silos and can't have communication, as long as it goes through the city manager.
I'm going to also say, though, that as, well, were you going to say something?
I was at the May 13th study session, and I recall vividly the, the conversation about reducing the number of physical spots, adding more ADA, and also having a place for people to pull in, to drop, and to leave. So that was communicated at the, at the May 13th study session, and there was a follow-up on our understanding via email. This is our takeaways from exactly what happened on June 4th, and we received no communication from a commissioner saying that's not what happened. Our understanding is that our current plan that we presented had one ADA, the commission would like four. You'd like us to reduce the numbers, and that was all given with the plan for feedback on June 4th of last year. So I, I have to push back there, Mr. Warner.
Sharon Anderson, go ahead.
I think what, what the mayor said about each of us having a, a hot-button topic around this really resonated for me, and mine, mine was ensuring the pedestrian safety for folks who are using this, this area, but particularly for those who are wheelchair-bound. And I, I'm very happy with the access solutions down to the beach. I think, I think that's great progress, increasing the number of ADA parking spots, great progress. Is there, is there some glaring reason why you wouldn't just put all four of the ADA spots close to the restroom, and?
They actually were together, and actually, feedback we received, I believe it was from Commissioner Shaw, said, shouldn't you have two on one end and two on the other? And that was commissioned, that was feedback that we incorporated back into that design.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so good reason, feedback. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, speaking to that, I can say that, yes, the bathroom building is a facility that somebody that's using a handicap space might like to access, but handicap placards are not just for people with wheelchairs, and the bathroom building is not the only reason that somebody would be there. There is a way to get down to the beach that, in this design, will be a lot more accessible than the current cliff off the edge of pavement, pavement at a parking lot, that that it might not be a wheelchair ramp, but somebody with a cane can much more easily get down to the beach on the east end as well. So somebody that wants to go with their little picnic basket to have a picnic on the beach can go on either end of the parking lot.
Thank you, Commissioner Treadwell. Not seeing any hands up right now, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up. Does anybody have any public comment on this item? Please feel free to approach the podium. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. Any final questions? Seeing none, I'll call the, oh, go ahead, Jackie.
I, I would merely like to give a, a up-to-the-minute report. When I visited this parking lot this afternoon, we seemed to be down to 12 parking spots with one ADA. So this, this concerns me greatly about delay in another year, you know, what, what will we have to work from?
Good point. All right, well, with that, I will call the vote then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley? Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro.
Yes, and I appreciate again everybody's feedback through this process and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that we have a really great ADA-accessible parking lot and bathroom and beach access coming up and I think that's gonna be great for our community. All right, so with that, I'm gonna move on now to our consideration of a delivery for salt for the 25-26 season. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Shamro. Yep, in front of you is the request to purchase 2,000 tons of road salt for the next winter season. We are under 500 tons presently and so we're hoping to again build up that supply for next season. There was a study session on this topic and a lot of good questions were asked and I appreciate the staff doing a lot of work to prepare for that. Commissioner Warner asked for a procedure or scope of work that we, or procedures that we have. I did send that to the entire commission today. So at this time, we are requesting to move forward with this MyDeal purchase of 2,000 tons.
To start, do we have any questions? Or is Frank presenting or, no, I was gonna say he has a study session last week, so. Okay, any questions on this right now? Do we have a motion on this? Minors, just, I don't think we have to bring Frank up, I'm just gonna clarify. As was covered last week, the idea was to have about 2,000 tons of salt for most years going in, because we got so low this year, that's why we're basically starting at 2,000, but future orders will not inherently be 2,000 if we don't need it, correct? You can just, I don't think we need to call.
No, it, the orders will be based on what we have left, based on the previous season, to get us up to at least 2,000, that's what we were recommending. We had talked about 2,500, it didn't seem like there was much appetite for that, but we do wanna make sure that we have enough at the beginning of the season to, to get us through to, to the end.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Heather.
Um, we were supplied today with the salt and sand policy. Frank is still here, isn't he?
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the, in that policy, it did state that city streets were not salted, nor were alleys salted, except at intersections or entrances or exits from alleys when there was ice buildup. Is that, is that your policy? Is that the policy that you're following?
Frank DeTuri, Director of Public Services, that is in our standard operating procedures under DPS. And Chris Weber was kind enough to come along tonight too. He's really the, he's really the knowledgeable person for exactly how that gets done. He, he performed that job for many years before he became superintendent. So the intent is, as you mentioned, on local roads, is to allow a snowpack to develop, but proximate to intersections of, of intersections and alleys with roadways, especially some of our alleys have quite a bit of slope on them. So those ones, those alleys that have slope coming down to the, to the local streets, place a little bit of salt on those so that you don't prevent a car sliding out into the road across the sidewalk, but not to salt the local roads, we, only at intersections.
So, so most of the salt then is going on emergency routes and the trunk lines?
I think there was a graphic in, in the presentation that shows 67% of the salt goes on 33 or 34% of our, of our roadways and those are the emergency routes, the MDOT and the emergency routes, teamed by police, fire, and DPS.
So what can, so if we're not salty in our city streets, what can we do to make them safer in the wintertime?
I think there's an effort with the Complete Streets Group Committee to inform the public in a way that might slow, a slow movement across the city, that might allow us to develop streets in a way so that we don't have to worry so much about speeds or that if we have speeds at lower, if we have vehicles moving at slower speeds, then, then we can even, even more so reduce the amount of salt that we have, that we use. It's just, I think it's really informing through any, any metrics we have, any processes we have. And again, I mentioned the Complete Streets, any of the outreach that we do through, through the clerk's office and communications that just get people to slow down.
So slower speeds save lives. If we're, if we'd all drive 25 or less during bad weather, we'd have safer streets.
The speed, the speed limit is a limit, it doesn't mean you go 25, right? It's, that's the top.
Thank you very much.
Good questions. Do we have other questions or a motion?
I'm going to have a comment, but I'll wait.
Your motion?
I'll move that the city commission approve a commitment order of 2,000 tons of rock salt, 1,200 tons of early fill and 800 tons of late fill for the 2025-2026 season with the final price to be determined at a later date with funds available in the Streets Division budget 101, 202, and 203, and Highway Maintenance Fund 202.
Uh, yep, okay. A second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Treadwell? Pardon, Heather, you guys can fight. Get a hand, a whisper and a vocal, so thank you all. Okay, with that motion, we can open up for any comments or further questions. Go ahead, Jackie.
Okay. A week ago, when we had our study session on this, I had asked for a, a history, a history that would show beginning inventories, amount purchased, amount used, and some sort of severity of winter weather indicator going back. You know, I found myself in, in department records some information that went back to 2009-10 season and I didn't wanna trust what I'd been able to find. I, I was expecting within this communication to, to have some more official numbers. But just in the last week, the, the request has dropped from 2,500 tons to 2,000 tons and I, I don't know why, I don't know what data that was based on. And I, I, I don't feel that I can vote for this until I have some data to base the decision on. If you look at this year, including our 500 extra tons, we purchased a total of 1,100. 23-24, it was 600. 22-23, it was 1,800. Two years prior to that, apparently it was zero. You have to go back to 2014-15 since we purchased more than 2,000 tons per year. And I understand that we are talking about an inventory management. You know, there are capacity issues, there are usage issues and, and there are financial issues connected with this. But I don't think that I should be making this decision without some data to base it on, so.
Did you have your hand up, Commissioner Treadwell?
No.
Okay. I would just say that it was addressed by the city manager that the request had been for 2,500, but based on the conversation, they decided to ask for 2,000 because this is a vote for the commission and the numbers you gave were kind of provided at the study session by Frank of saying that was to get us basically up to the 2,000-2,500 range, that's why they varied so much. So we, we know from our presentation a couple of weeks ago that we don't often just straight run out and so that's why we don't get very big orders very often. So just to summarize from the study session for some general information, I, I respect that you asked for that to be provided and that was not made available or able to be gathered in the last week, but I just wanted to tie that together a little there. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, any public comment on this?
Just me, 63, Kajis Drive, from 1B. I'd like to ask the city commission, do they have a time machine? Can they go in the future and say, well, we know that this event's gonna happen and it's gonna be a pretty bad winter? I don't think you have and the inventory of the salt does run out. It depends on how bad of frigid and cold weather we have. And, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. I don't see a hand, so I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
And Mayor Shamro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Per our, with our adjusted amendment, or amendment, adjusted agenda, new business, we will be starting with what was previously numbered, number two for introduction of possible enactment of code ordinances for the R2 district. I wanted to make a quick note on this, bringing it in, I saw, or I heard of, I should say, the conversation that happened at the Planning Commission level on this and was actually kind of surprised the previous zoning changes that these kind of were, some of these came from, were not mysteriously dealt with. There was a study session where then Mayor Richard Lewis took us through all the items, this, or maybe it was a regular meeting, but no form of vote, we went through each item and the commission basically said, yeah, we have an appetite for that right now, no, we don't. And then that, after I'd gone through the Planning Commission and then that was then studied, what was decided to come out of that was then discussed and voted on over a couple of more meetings. And so I, I understand that that was asked on the spot and everybody was trying to kind of scramble and remember, but I checked the meeting minutes, I talked to other commissioners from that time, city commissioners, and that was how the process arrived at, was arrived at for the last time some of these were brought forward and not picked up. We have now gone through for this item, the process to, through the Planning Commission and now it is being brought to the City Commission, which is the process for us to now make that determination once again. But I just wanted to be very clear because there were some implications that there was some kind of not public or not transparent process or there was confusion about the process. So I just wanted to say from the City Commission standpoint, that was the process that was followed last time and that's what we're doing today. We've got this introduced to us from the Planning Commission and we're gonna go have, ahead and have that presented, but I wanted to make sure that was clear as we move forward.
All right, good evening, Sean Winter, City Planning Director. So this is a Planning Commission-initiated amendment to the R2 mixed-density zoning district, residential district. This would allow for an increase in density from two dwellings per lot to four. For reference, the R2 district occupies about 2.3% of the city's zoned land. So it's a pretty small portion, one of our smaller zoning districts. This was a specific recommendation in the Master Plan's Action Plan and it's also one of the items that the Planning Commission picked up this year as one of their annual goals to move forward. So essentially, really the only thing that this amendment would change is how a building can be divided on the inside into up to four dwellings instead of two. So there are no changes proposed in this amendment to the lot area width, building height, setbacks, impervious surfaces, or the number of buildings that could be built on an R2 lot. This was done with intention to allow any additional housing that is built to accommodate more dwelling units, to blend more harmoniously with the neighborhood character and not disrupt that. Any portion of the R2 district that exists within a historic district would be subject to the same historic district standards as a one and two family houses today. So there's no exception from that with this amendment. There were some concerns about parking. We do not allow parking off-street except for weekends in the summer months, so any parking would have to be accommodated. Parking and building footprint are both calculated for part of the impervious surface coverage. So if you need a bigger parking lot, you're gonna have a smaller footprint house to stay within that limit. Couple of things to point out, whenever you hit three or more dwelling units that this would allow, it actually triggers a lot of additional ordinance requirements that one and two family homes are exempt from that may have a positive benefit. For instance, if you have three or more dwelling units, the whole entire site has to meet the stormwater ordinance. One and two-family dwelling unit lots do not. Fire suppression and protection is required once you have three or more dwelling units. Parking areas must be screened to minimize impact on neighboring properties. These homes, if rented, would be subject to the rental inspection program, or ordinance rather, which our one and two-family homes are prohibited from by charter. And then probably most notably, this would now subject our two lots, if they have three or more dwellings, to our tree canopy ordinance. So right now, we require on R1 and R2, for one and two-family homes, one tree per 4,000 square feet. That jumps up to a 45% canopy coverage if you have three or more units. So instead of one tree required per lot, now you have four trees required per lot. So it's kind of well-balanced with some of the other priorities and goals and objectives within the master plan. So that's really about all there is to this. It's really about allowing more divisions within the allowed structures to accommodate more housing. And at this time, the, the request before you is to move this formally as to, let me think, how do I say it? Introduce this for a future vote, sorry. I forgot on that last word.
Introduction for possible enactment.
Correct.
There we go. Okay, uh, do we have any questions? Go ahead, Heather.
On February 22nd, you said that a lot of the R2 lots, current R2 lots, have two separate homes on them. I could not find anything.
I don't, I don't recall saying that either, I'd have to go back and watch. I, I have said.
I watched it, that's what I did.
Primarily, our R2 lots are single-family homes.
Well, you said, you said a lot of the R2 lots have two separate homes on them.
Is that a question or?
Well, I was wondering where the data was.
I mean, I'll stand before you and say the majority of our R2 lots are single-family.
Okay, here's another question. Were roof heights, you know, the difference between a 35-foot flat roof and a 35-foot peaked roof ever discussed at the, because that is what?
Yeah, so we had a study session, I believe it was in October of 2023 at the Planning Commission and we went through a whole PowerPoint on this. We looked at different sketch-up models with flat roofs and peaked roofs. There is a perception that if you use a flat roof, that it's gonna pierce higher in elevation than a peaked roof and that's not actually the case, because if you have a peaked roof, we measure the building height from the midpoint of the eve to the ridge. So a peaked roof is always gonna sit taller than a, a flat roof at the maximum height. So we went through that, the Planning Commission explored it and they didn't feel that that was something they wanted to pursue anymore.
Uh, how, how about, would you agree that allowing higher-density housing generally increases the value of the land that it's sitting on?
Um, I'm not a realtor, so I, I wouldn't feel comfortable making that.
And that that would lead to higher assessed property values, which then lead to higher property taxes?
Well, in that case, if that was the case, then it would be, the property taxes would be divided through more units, so it could actually lead to less property taxes.
Has there been any outreach to residents across the city? Because about why nothing has happened with the upzone from two years ago, where all single families were allowed to add duplexes? And there have been five permits, I understand, issued in two years?
Yeah, yep, so there have been five land use permits issued. Only four of those actually resulted in something new being built. One of them was the conversion of an ADU to a second primary home because they had twice the area, so therefore it qualified as a second home. They don't have to pay the ADU license every year and things like that because that was one of the amendments that was enacted. But you know, we talked about this quite a bit publicly at the Planning Commission meetings, the Housing Open House. If you recall, we had the inverted triangle, right? There's, yes, what zoning allows, but then all these layers that restrict what actually happens. So it's, it's not a surprise to us on staff that only five or so came in the last year and a half because you have to have a willing property owner who wants to do it. I mean, I think most of you all live in single-family homes and myself included and none of us converted our homes to duplexes, right? and none of us converted our homes to duplexes, right? So someone's gotta want to do it and have the means to do it in order to move it forward. So yeah, so we've ended up with five so far. We get inquiries quite a bit on it. But as you know, cost of construction right now is extremely expensive. And it's projected to go up even more. I mean, I was reading an MLive article just today. The impact on tariffs in Michigan are expected to increase the cost of a new house by $10,000 to $17,000. So I mean, it's, it's a hard market out there to provide housing.
So you, so you don't really know why nobody's doing it. It's not, you don't, you can't say, well, it's a lack of interest or construction's too high, or you don't have any developers coming to say permitting is too difficult, or?
No, we actually have a very streamlined permitting system in the region here in the city. It's, it goes very quick compared to a lot of others. And a lot of that's just due to the professional staff that we have that can handle a lot of things in-house. So our permitting is probably the fastest in the county. So it's not that. You know, I think what it's important to realize is every house is owned by a different individual family. It's up to them whether or not they want to do it. No one can be forced to do it. So people who have had the opportunity have moved forward on it, and others, you know, for the most part, are happy with their property as it is. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have other questions or a motion or? Mitch?
I'm not expecting you to have this on hand. I could have asked in the interim between going from planning to the City Commission, but it might be helpful, as this is just the introduction, but for the future public hearing about this, to have a map from during the extensive open house process that we had. A map was created that shows all the existing duplexes, triplexes, et cetera, that are in areas that we think of as single-family housing.
Mitch, would you like to make a motion then to move that forward? Otherwise, there won't be anything.
Yes. I'll make the motion. Unless somebody's faster.
I move that the amendments to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 1334 R2, two-family dwelling district, and Chapter 1368 size and area requirements, as recommended by the City Planning Commission, be introduced and scheduled for possible enactment on April 7, 2025.
That one. I'll second that.
All right. There we go. Commissioner Treadwell?
Mayor, if I may, to Mitch's question, I still have that existing out there online on that story map. If you still have the link. If not, I will give it to the clerk to distribute, and I'll put it in the April 17 memo as a link.
Okay. Commissioner Werner, did you?
Yeah, just, I'm, I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote on this yet. So just voicing that out loud, like I, I and even if I vote yes to move it forward, I'm not certain that I would vote yes at, when it's back in front of us.
Are you having a Gary moment where you're kind of talking while you're deciding?
Yep.
Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah. I, I actually wrote to the Planning Commission about this item, this issue. I got some responses from a couple of commissioners. But I was concerned, my, my biggest concern is that the current R2 neighborhoods are very different from each other, and they're different enough that they should really be treated separately. Not all of them, but most of them. For example, some are currently affordable and some aren't. Then there was a whole lot of flack, that you're probably aware of, that flew around about neighborhood character and this so-called implicit or inherent NIMBY bias in the word "character", even though that word does appear repeatedly in all sorts of documents that we have in the city. So let's step away from the perceived character and look at the character of the terrain. I don't think you can be a NIMBY when you're talking about different kinds of terrains. The Slab Town neighborhood that's in the R2, for example, has Kids Creek running back and forth all across it, right through the middle of it. And I'm not sure if you're aware that there are three properties on Cedar Street that were purchased by one buyer and then divided into three lots. And apparently, building sites have been identified on Cedar Street. There is nothing there right now, except the creek, a bridge, a lot of trees. I just don't see what the, why you would want to increase the density in this neighborhood. It, it's, it, it's, it's a fragile ecosystem. And is, is providing, is providing more housing in this fragile, in this particular fragile ecosystem more important than protecting our resources? I, I just don't get it. The creek doesn't win. The homeowners don't win. If you, if you allow, if a developer buys that property on Cedar Street and puts in quadrplexes, the, the, the creek doesn't win, the homeowners don't win, because flooding, it already happens. It's happening there right now. The streets don't win because of the hot, of the water situation and the crumbling asphalt. Nobody wins. So I, I, so there's a big difference in that neighborhood that should be looked at separately from the rest of these R2 neighborhoods. Another one, I'm just gonna pick out one more, is the neighborhood between Barlow and Rose. The home values in there are about $300,000 right now, more or less. A little bit more, maybe a little bit higher. This is a, an affordable neighborhood for Traverse City, and there's almost nothing for sale. Allowing higher-density housing increases the potential value of land, because you could put more units on it. You know, going from a single-family house to a duplex is, is something that an individual homeowner might be interested in, but it's not a developer interest. There's just not enough money to be made from going from one to two. There's a lot of money to be made from going to one to four. And with the strong demand that we have for housing right now, property owners will see their land prices rise. And we will see developers looking at these properties in R2. Increased land values will lead to higher assessed property values, which will increase your local taxes. Yes, Director Winter has a point, that if you have more people sitting on a smaller piece of land, that may not happen. But it, it could also go the other way. In Michigan, you could only increase your assessment by 5% or the, the rate of inflation. But new buyers coming in could see a big, sharp jump in, in their taxes. So again, how is this helpful? And how is this helpful to current homeowners or new buyers? You're gonna have higher property values for all landowners, even those not redeveloping. You're gonna have an increase in property tax burdens, especially for long-term homeowners who will eventually sell. And you're gonna have displacement pressures by rising taxes, making it harder for lower-income residents to afford staying in the area. So this is really serious. And it's not just good enough to wave around your zoning wand and say that more is better. This change affects the lives of, and the livelihood of people who live in, who live here in our city right now. And it's not that I am opposed to upzones. I think that upzones are, are necessary along our corridors. And this particular area of Rose and Barlow may be a good place for an upzone. But has any outreach happened to those, to that neighborhood and those residents about what they can expect by, from their rising value, land value changes and assessments, and from developers? So that's, that's really all I have to say about this issue right now. I'm not going to support pushing it forward. I think it needs to go back to the Planning Commission. I also think that those roofs need to be looked at, because a 35-foot peaked roof is a, even if, even if a flat roof only goes to 35 feet, it's, it has a whole different perception standing on the street, and it affects the character of the buildings in a neighborhood.
Did I see? Sorry, I thought, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Mitch.
Yes. Well, we have the numbers that it, from the last zoning reform package, that it triggered five permits that created, accounted seven potentially new units. But that is only new units created. That doesn't account for the fact that we do have a number of duplexes, triplexes, et cetera, that were grandfathered in, because you might have had a house that was built in 1905 as a single-family house for a large extended family. Then, say, at 1950, it was divided into two, three, four, or more apartments, as our zoning code allowed at the time. And since then, our zoning code has become more restrictive. But if the building is still standing and it had the prior use, that prior use is allowed to continue. If an upzoning change goes through, that would not necessarily trigger a, a new building permit, because the building is still there. It's still being used in the current standing, where it's configured. But it does allow more opportunities for that homeowner to, say, get financing to do a redevelopment project if one of the walls or the roof needs serious work. That's not something that would show up in the spreadsheet of these, where the five building permits that resulted from that, because it's not changing the number of units there. It's not changing the size of the building. But it is providing more flexibility to that owner. Also, in response to Commissioner Shaw's comments about Kids Creek, I also feel strongly about the need to protect that watershed. That's why we have the European buffer ordinance in development as well. We've put some rules in place about having a buffer of, I believe Kids Creek is 25 feet through that area, that would restrict the ability to develop right up to the water's edge. The property you referenced that recently changed ownership, I think it's rather ironic considering the day, but I've always known that as the Irish property, because it was owned by Leslie Irish for the last 20 years. But it is a patch of woods with an outdated, structurally non-functional house on it. You called it, you said it has a bridge to that property, but that bridge does not meet any sort of construction standards. It would not meet an Eagle permit. And if any building permit for that was pulled, that bridge would not stand. And for that reason, I have been talking weekly with Dave Weston about that property, because he expects it to come at some point to the Board of Zoning, I mean, Board of Zoning Appeals on which I sit. And there'd have to be some creative access or site plan for that property to get it developed in our current zoning code or any zoning code, just because of the access issue. So while in that case, a property owner might want it to develop, it is not going to get developed within the floodplain, which makes it much harder for that property to get developed.
Okay. Um, I've got a, usually we don't pass notes during commission meetings, but this is a question written down by Commissioner Stanley here. I just wanted to make that clear, since it was a paper being passed. The question from Commissioner Stanley for Sean Winter is, would any quadplex built on Cedar Street be any larger than a single-family home? And I had a similar question, or if somebody decided to build a duplex, would that be, the quad be larger than any of those examples?
No. And that's one of the things I want to step up to say. In that example, we're presupposing that if it's allowed to go to a quadplex, automatically that's what's gonna be built there. And we know, we can look at the data. It's in your actual report from the Planning Commission from 2024. That's not necessarily the case. But no, it can't be any larger. It can't be any closer than a single-family home. So I, I'm having a hard time, because we're, we're pointing out that the development of the Cedar Street properties is negative because of quadplex. But we're not hearing the same negativity if they develop it as a single-family home. I've heard a lot about taxes. You know, the state in 2023 enacted a, a number of pieces of legislation that give you the tools to address that. So if you're concerned about taxes not making it affordable, that is where you could enact ordinances under either the attainable facility, sorry, attainable Residential Facilities Act, or the, I don't know, sorry, Residential Facilities Act. There's two of them. The difference being is one applies for projects that are four or fewer dwelling units, and the other one is for five or more. The trade-off is that they have to be rented at an affordable rate. So you have the tools before you to adjust that. The Planning Commission can't do anything about taxes. All right. They, they can only work with the land use regulations. And this is where the City Commission and Planning Commission can work hand-in-hand to try to address these, these goals together. So I'm happy to discuss those more in the future if you want. But again, there, there are options to address that, if that is the concern.
Commissioner, sorry, Mr. Winter touched on one part of tax aspects, but I did make a note. Maybe of the people here, Lauren could answer, or maybe Heidi. But the other, that was pointed out, and this happens with Proposal A, Protected Housing, of it's only allowed to raise at a certain amount. But I think there's also something we don't talk about a lot, that if we had a bunch of development come online, like two hotels, a new apartment building, and three duplexes or quadplexes, and I'm using those as small numbers, because I don't know what the numbers would be to hit the threshold. At some point, we hit what's called a headly rollback, correct? And can you explain that briefly, too? Because that is another built-in trigger that we have to, I think that people don't realize, we have to kind of mitigate development here in the, in Michigan.
Well, I was told there would be no math, but I-
I know. I'm struggling to.
I'm gonna turn to Heidi, because I think you can probably explain that in better terms than I can. I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, Heidi.
And if, and if, we need to get back on this one, because I have a vague understanding, but also numbers, I know, on the spot can be not as fun.
So, and this isn't headly one-on-one, but just, so the taxable value, the taxable value is different than the assessed value in terms that the assessed value can, will grow based on the state-prescribed percentages that are allowed. But then the taxable value can only go up by a certain calculation. And the County Equalization Director actually is the one, will review that for all of the units. And then what they'll do is, we have, there are 4029 that you all, will assess our millage of the 11-point. And then that will basically say, your statutory says you can levy up to 13 mills, or whatever the statute says. But if you attempt to, if you hit headly, it's gonna force you to roll back. So even though we wanna levy the 11 mills, equalization's gonna say, no, you've hit headly. You can only levy 10.9 of those mills. So the tax bill for all of the homeowners will, in fact, even though their taxable value will be a little higher, it will be lower, because we aren't allowed to assess that higher millage. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Two hands right away. I think I saw Jackie's first and then Heather's, but.
I, I would just like to express my concern about, um, there appears to be an attempt to do some rewriting of recent history. Amy, in a different context, you, you mentioned how, well, staff doesn't present the same project in the same way over and over again. But in this case, it appears that that, that's what's happening, that the same proposal that was denied for advancement by a city commission that included five of the people at this table, has been brought back intact without the, even addressing the concerns that were expressed by that prior city commission. So I, I can, I can tell you that when, as a member of the Planning Commission, as well as this current city commission, I can tell you that when the, the density proposal for R2 was brought before the Planning Commission most recently, that there was a, and, and the question was asked, why wasn't it approved with the rest of the density zoning package that was addressed in 2023? And I heard things like, well, it was the last item on the agenda, and they must have been tired, and it fell off the, just fell off the radar. So we're bringing it back. And, and that didn't sound to me like our, our city clerk's department, and, and that's something, things don't just disappear. And so when I, when I tracked down videos of the meeting where the decision was made, it was a very robust conversation, that, that there was a discussion where one of the commissioners had spoken with the head of the Historic Districts Commission. They had a very complete conversation about the issue of modifying heights and flat roof- and flat roofed buildings versus peak roofed buildings with an aim to ensure compatibility of mass and scale with existing buildings within the districts. There was also expressed a concern of the option to combine multiple adjacent lots and perhaps constructing one building that would cross existing lot lines and again, create mass and scale that was out of, out of line with existing structures. And then a further piece of information surfaced that said that Central Neighborhood actually formally petitioned the Planning Department for an R one designation. And that that was not, not, not accepted or not acted upon, not considered. So with all of this going on, I, I have a difficult time without at least picking up the concerns of the prior commission about, you know, mass and scale. And, and doing as Commissioner Shaw suggested and gathering some feedback from the impacted neighborhoods. I hesitate to, to move this one forward.
Fair.
I'll just add to that if I can real quick. We've never received an application to rezone the R two in the Central Neighborhood. So it's not that staff never acted on it, it's never been received. Right, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Did you receive a petition?
A petition's not an application. I don't even recall receiving an application to be perfectly honest, but we don't act on petitions. We have to have a formal application for a zoning amendment and there's never been one. I just want to point out, because you made the comment there that your, in your analogy about staff not bringing something back, this is nothing to do with staff. This is the Planning Commission. They're an autonomous body. They can send up anything that they want. They can modify it or not. It's up to you guys to take a vote. And then lastly, I would just add that the City Commission in twenty-three aired. They don't have a choice not to bring an amendment to a vote. The state law says you have to bring it to a vote. So this is left without closure. So the Planning Commission, and I think you perfectly portrayed better than I can, Jackie, the confusion that the Planning Commission has had since then. And that's why they want enclosure and they opted to bring it back since it was teed up already.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, I have a really quick question that, that just touched on to clarify then. And then Heather, I did see your hand was up, I don't want to ignore you. But this just got brought up. So are we, and this is, you know, something I think we should clarify. So is the, does the law actually say that we, by us not doing this and putting it forward, we would actually be violating the law? Or is that, sorry, is that referring to something from the last conversations we had?
The zoning enabling act does say that once an amendment, whether it's initiated by Planning Commission or a citizen or staff or anyone, goes through their public hearing, gets sent to the legislative body, the legislative body after consideration shall take a vote on it. So our charter adds one more layer. It requires an introduction at least fourteen days prior to that action. So yeah, so a vote is required under state law on all zoning amendments.
Okay.
See, it doesn't mean you have to vote yes. Right, you can vote no.
It doesn't mean you have to vote in fourteen days either.
Right, right.
Okay, just want to clarify that and then.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Winter for his professionalism this evening. This is not a staff recommendation. It is coming from the Planning Commission on a seven-one vote. And it is up to this body to vote it up or down. So thank you for answering the questions that came before you tonight.
Heather, you, well, Heather and then Tim, I see your hand go up too.
Yes, I remember, I was new on the Planning Commission, so I don't know what it was, but it came from the Central Neighborhood asking to be downsized to R one. And this was during Restorance time. A single family home on these, in this slab town Kids Creek area, even though it's only the size of a single family home, it can be very large. And if there are four people or four families living in that, that's more impervious surface. It does impact the terrain. And do we have a riparian buffer ordinance right now? No, that's a rhetorical question. How long have you been working on the riparian buffer ordinance?
You've been working on it longer than I have.
I think it's been four years? Yep. Yep. So if this were, for example, to pass and there's no riparian buffer, you know, what, you've got ten feet. Kids Creek has ten feet currently as setback.
Hold on, I'm sorry, Tim Warner, who has his hand up next.
Yeah, just trying to vocalize like what I'm struggling with. And it's been touched on, but in my attempt to put it into words, I guess it's, academically, I can see that there's a benefit to the community in ten and twenty years because there will be more housing, even if it's incremental. But I'm not seeing how it's a benefit to our current residents and citizens. It's one thing for maybe somebody that has a home and they can figure out a way to build an ADU. But to go from a single family home to a fourplex, that, not that it can't be done, but most people don't have the means to do that. And so I guess that's what I'm struggling with is like the reality of today's citizens and if this benefits them versus future citizens in more homes.
Thank you for them. And I just am sharing again a note that was written by Commissioner Stanley where she just wanted to make the point that four households in one building is the same footprint as the impervious surface as of a one or a two bedroom. Because this allows you to divvy up what's inside, not the outside of it. So just wanted to share that because that was written there again in our different way of doing things tonight. And then I'm also just going to say that I will vote for this since we've been advised legally that that's what we should be doing. But again, it is a reminder that we do have the right, once this comes back, to vote no on it if we want to. This is introduction for possible enactment. And so I just wanted to kind of draw it back to that. This is not, this is just part of the process though. So, but I, I think we've had some really good comments. So I wanted to thank everybody for that too. Do we have other comments right now? Or questions? Mitch?
Yes, well, we've had some comments at the Planning Commission from our emails. And we might get some in public comments today about the character of our neighborhoods and maybe consideration for differences in them. To that point, I can look at a section of R two zoned area that I walked through on the way to this meeting today along Seventh Street. I can look from Central Grade School, which is technically R two, but I, one, it's TCAPs, which is exempt from zoning. And two, I don't think that that's going to get redeveloped for housing anytime in my lifetime, much less beyond that. But looking right across Seventh Street, I can see a lot with two single family houses built on it right now on the same lot. Only one is occupied right now, but it's still two, two houses on the same lot. Right next to it is a house that is set so far back that you could build a house in the front yard while still abiding by front yardage and side setbacks. That house that's set far back has had changing numbers of mailboxes on it. I don't know how many units it's actually partitioned into, but between two and four. Two doors down, there's another duplex. There's houses on the same block that might have an ADU or might just have a garage that was built at some point with a stove, a second floor and other amenities that could convert to an ADU. So this is, if anything, reflecting the density of dwelling units that we already have in existing R two and making more of those potentially habitable units legal and occupiable.
Thank you, Commissioner Treadwell. Seeing no other hands at this time, I'm going to open this up for public comment right now. If you have any public comment, please approach the podium.
Ms. Reed, six three, Cady Drive, from one B. Sears Street was referenced in all of this. Well, it's a floodplain. So I think that if it did get developed out there, would you think that that person who develops that area, they want to take that risk of saying, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and put residential development in there. Oh, don't care if it's floodplain or nothing. But there are certain restrictions. There's environmental laws that, that preclude that. Makes it very hard for somebody to put a complex out there out from Sears Street. Because unless they want to take that high risk of going ahead and developing the floodplain, I don't think that's going to happen. I think it'd be too costly. As referenced, as, as a bridge structure would have to go through there. Well, that bridge structure is something that just wouldn't planks. It's not really, it's just a private driveway. And so if someone wanted to put a complex out there, they'd have to go through a lot of permits. And there's a whole entire process. So it won't be something instant like, you know, it just popping up. So I know I'm going to have a very, just, you know, that's, that's how it is. So unless somebody just bypasses all of the zoning permits, it's not going to happen. So thank you. I love the comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Amy Flukeft, I live in the Boardman neighborhood. I'd like to point out that my concern is a little bit more attention to perhaps recognizing the differences that the historic neighborhoods could have in this regard. I'll specifically note that while overall R two is indeed a small percent of the city, it's one-third of the Boardman neighborhood. Furthermore, I, I, I'm not quite sure that there's been enough opportunity for people to have a chance to weigh in on this issue specifically in the historic neighborhoods. Based on the discussion I've had with neighbors or on the neighborhood Facebook page, this has not been anywhere near the discussion as in the old or the previous upzoning. And I think people could be forgiven, residents could be forgiven for thinking that perhaps that was that and not recognizing that this was a continuing element of it. And if you're confused about it, imagine how the citizens may feel. So I personally think that it would be helpful if either the city could have more listening sessions or come to the neighborhoods to discuss this in more detail specifically so that everyone understands either why it was not initially acted on or what the difference could be to the different neighborhoods in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Go ahead.
Fred Bember, twelve twenty-three Randolph Street, city resident. I don't live near an R two district, but something concerns me a great deal about proceeding forward with this at an April seventh commission meeting. A year and a half ago, when a great number of zoning changes were being considered, there was a great deal of publicity and a great deal of public interest. A lot of people showed up for city commission meetings to speak on the subject. We're not seeing that right now. Most of the people that live in or near our two districts have no actual notice that this is being considered. No notice was delivered to people in those areas. They don't know this is occurring. I don't think it's appropriate that the city commission go forward and make these changes without actual notice to the people in those neighborhoods so that they can weigh in on their opinions about this, which I think city commission members should consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something before you start counting?
Maybe.
We let you get away with a lot of drink, go ahead.
I want to tell all of you, this is my sixty-third wedding anniversary. Congratulations. I feel that this is a very important meeting and that's why I'm here instead of home having a glass of wine with my true love.
I too feel that just because you can do this, you really shouldn't do it at this time. No one has come to our neighborhoods to speak about this. I happen to live in an R two district. And I have heard that this is the, the, what did I put in my letter? The free falling fruit, not, the, anyway. I, I just feel that this is going to happen throughout the city. It's not going to be confined to the R two districts. It's going to move into the R one districts gradually. We're just the easy ones to start with because as you say, we're a very small portion of the city. So we aren't here with a great number of people at this point because I agree that most people don't know that this is happening. I have a lot of concerns, but my biggest one, just like it was with the ADUs, is owner occupancy. I just feel that four units is a business if the owner doesn't live there. If you think about it, those four units can be rented out, each one for thirty days. That's a wonderful business to have in Traverse City. When we're the first people or the first city that people should visit in the nation, it seems. So I feel that owner occupancy is very, very important. I feel that way because I also believe in homeownership, which I think is very important. And homeownership is good for families and it's very good for our community. It adds stability. It, it makes people engage in public comment and public affairs. I just think there are so many benefits to having homeownership. And every time you have a lot that is not occupied by a homeowner, and that doesn't mean that this homeowner couldn't have two or three more units. It just means that there is a homeowner on the lot and we're reaping that benefit every single day. And I did point out to the Planning Commission that that is not because we want to police the people who are there, but we need managers if you're going to be having rental units. It is very beneficial and particularly if you're going from two units to four units. So I also, now I'm the one that put that paper on your desk there. And I want to say that even putting my opinion on that paper made me very uncomfortable. I hope you will all go around and look at these various.
Ms. Rossi, thank you for your time and happy wedding anniversary.
Take a tour.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrin, and happy anniversary. And thank you for coming so festive and making your document festive as well for today. I hope you have a good glass of wine too. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have any last questions or comments? I am going to, I'll try to look at myself, but I might reach out to staff because the, Adrin's comment did remind me that I think at one point when the last group came through, and I can't remember if it was at the study session or beyond, we talked about occupancy and not for certain types of things. So I'll be curious. That's what, I thought it was okay, for eighty years we had required. Okay, thank you. That was one thing I was going to check on. Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and call the vote right now. All in favor? Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Stanley?
She says yes.
All right, well, okay, yes, I heard. Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Werner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
No.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No, it failed, right? Isn't it five votes?
No, it's four votes.
No, four votes.
It says here, five.
Five votes in the packet.
That's an error.
Okay.
It requires four votes to introduce or enact an ordinance.
Okay.
That's in the city charter.
So with this, yeah, so we can, that will come back. And this is, fulfills our legal duty too. So with that, then we are going to now move the acceptance of the financial statements because that is now item number two with our amendment. So I believe that's Heidi? Or is it just you doing the general?
Oh, well, I just wanted to let you know that we do have Heidi Sheppi, our finance and director and treasurer here to answer any questions. There is no formal presentation.
Okay, and this is kind of something we do every year, the formal. Okay, and this is kind of something we do every year, the formal statement. Does anybody have any questions about this? Okay, Heather and then Jackie.
You may have noticed in the Record Eagle, maybe it was on Friday, that they found corrosion on the North Union Street Bridge. I think that bridge was built in 1955, so you have to expect certain problems. But that corrosion is, cause corrosion, salt causes corrosion. I did see that there is a request for dedicated funds for bridge maintenance in the 2526 budget. Yes, is that true? That's the last bridge, right?
Of seven, yes.
We haven't completed the budget yet. This is the 2324 financial statements that we're presenting. The budget will be coming in, in May.
So it, not until 2526 is the dedicated fund for bridges, bridge maintenance. You wrote this to me.
I wrote.
We have had a request for dedicated funds for bridge maintenance. Look for this discussion in the 2526 budget.
Twenty-five, yes, but what we're presenting today is the audit.
Okay, so there's no bridge, because we now have weight restrictions on that bridge, but we're gonna have to wait.
That is correct. Yeah, when we present the budget, we'll, look, look for that when we present the budget. But this is the 2425 audit, and we actually have Doug.
2324.
2324. And we have our auditors here to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Do you, go ahead, Jackie?
Okay, I, I had two questions, please. There was a chart on page six of your, your, your deck, and it showed the various sources of government revenues. And at the far right, there, the bar chart showed the trend in property taxes from 2020 through 2024. And I, I couldn't find the specific numbers related to that, but I, it, it appeared as though our property tax revenues are going up at an accelerating rate. And I wondered if that was just my bad eyes, or, or if that seems to be true.
Property taxes are increasing annually, year over year, based on, as shown in the graph.
Increasing rate?
Graph.
Okay, all right. Do you?
Just to clarify, if I may, that's the revenue, not the actual tax rate.
Yes, yes, yes. And, but, but this one was specifically the category for property tax revenues that I was looking at.
Correct.
So. Why is that growing at, at a faster and faster clip? Can you help me understand that?
So the taxable value, again, is created by the assessor.
Right.
And then the assessor is, it's, it's all, the assessor has to answer to the equalization director, who then has to answer to the state of Michigan. So the state of Michigan establishes their, their rates that they expect the, the units assessors to assess and equalize the taxable values. And I've learned more about this as we go, whereas the assessor, and if our assessor were here, they would be able, she would be able to tell you a lot better than I. But the equalization, when they equalize the taxable values, they have to adhere to the state's schedule. So they can't come in and say, oh, we don't want to raise taxes this year. They have to adhere to what the state tells them to. And so it's equalized throughout the, the entire state and then, and throughout the county.
Interesting. You, you just taught me something. I didn't, I didn't realize that local municipalities like ours can't really make that decision.
What I was informed is if they don't, then what Jim, or the county equalization decided is that the county equalization would then, what they call factor, and then the state would come in, take over the role, and then charge us to do our equalization for us, is what I was told.
Oh, wow.
Didn't know that.
So, so we, I mean, we, we have, we have autonomy and we have the ability to assess the role based on areas and guidelines, but we do, do have to follow the state's overall guideline in terms of those percentages and those rates.
Thank you. That helps.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll keep working at it until I get it, Heidi. The other question I had was about fund balances and changes in fund balance. You know, I'm always trying to look at how much have we left unspent? And this, this is numbered page 19 in the auditor's report. And it had some pretty amazing, surprising to me, numbers for like, saying that at the year ended last June 30th, that our fund balance from the general fund was $15 million? Am I, am I interpreting that correctly?
That is correct.
And that our total revenues in the general fund for the same year were just shy of 24 million?
That is correct.
And, and, and we have a target to have a 20% maximum fund balance?
Yeah, that is why we brought the additional, this, what you just approved, the additional $350,000 out of this year's budget to utilize fund balance. You'll be seeing an addition, a couple more additional requests to utilize fund balance to contribute towards some of the projects, because we're hoping to plan, we don't want it to grow that mu, and then that's not the policy. And I know we have a policy. And you'll see that in the budget. I created a page to show the fund balance history and hopefully make a plan for utilizing that.
Great, thank you.
It is on my radar, and it is something that we'll be addressing.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, just to jump in on that. So we, as a community and as a city, have been very fiscally conservative over the many decades. And so what we define as a fund balance is different than what that gentleman up there defines as a fund balance. And he's told us that many years.
And we always forget.
And so it tends to show up in here at what he considers a fund balance, but we're even more conservative. And we say, oh, yeah, yeah, but that pile of money, that's not what we consider part of the fund balance. Let's set that over here. And let's set that other one over there. But we still have a significant fund balance.
And you see on that graph, there's, there's two separate, there's the Gatsby 54. So those are actually, we've separated those out into separate funds for, that you have earmarked for distinguished spending. So the general fund is a little different, is the lower of the two.
And, and just for a little bit of context, too, really, the past two budget seasons, just with changing in leadership of the city, and I mean that administratively, not the boards, we kind of, I feel like we didn't get into as robust budgeting, because we had an interim, and then Liz had been on the job for just a couple of months. And so I think that as we're moving through and viewing some of these, we are very conservative, but we were even more conservative the last couple of years with that kind of difference and panning off the baton, too. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much. We'll ask you about fund balances again in a year or two.
There needs to be a motion to accept, I believe.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot there was a motion with this one. I apologize.
I move that the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2023, 2024 for the City of Traverse City be accepted.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we're moving on to actual item number three, which is an update on the city's discussion with Garfield Township regarding our bulk water.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. You have a memo from your city attorney and I in your packet, along with two supporting documents. And we have a presentation, if we could get that teed up to go along with it. I also would like to note that we have some colleagues from a different municipality on the same issue, from Garfield Township. We have supervisor Joe McManus here. I believe I saw township manager Chris Barchef, and I believe Garfield's engineer is here, Jennifer Hodges-Graham. I think those are the three from Garfield. And if you would like, we can give the presentation from here. I think we should go to the podium?
Up to you.
All right.
Hello. So, I'm sorry, I'm short. So this presentation today, I would like to thank Colleen Pavelio for putting this together for us. And I would also like to thank, again, supervisor McManus and township manager Barchef for reviewing this. So they have seen this as well, so we can have a good dialogue. I would just like to introduce the topic, which is we are going to talk about the water agreement update between City of Traverse City and Garfield Township. And then I will be turning it over to our city attorney, Lauren.
I'm only slightly taller. So just a little bit of background on this topic. The city has several water supply contracts. We call them bulk water agreements, as a sort of our shorthand for it. And they are with Garfield Peninsula and Elmwood Townships. The subject of this presentation and this topic is Garfield Township's water, bulk water agreement, which was entered into in 2003, and it goes through 2028. So we're coming up on the end. The other two come up in 2029. So this is gonna be a topic that we need to start getting into now for all three of the bulk water agreements, and that's coming up for all three of them. So what I, what you've known since probably about a year ago is that we've been dealing with some challenges related to capacity under the Garfield agreement. There are certain permits that are required from Eagle when connections are made to, to the system, such as water towers, or a new connection from a subdivision or something like that. Those are called Act 399 permits. So those will come from Eagle when somebody wants to tap into the system, so to speak. So that's been a factor. There has been an issue with an expanded service out into Long Lake Township through Garfield, so that has been a topic of conversation. And then another part of the conversation has dealt with the, the commons property, and in specifically the, the Rec Authority's Barnes project that they've been working on. And that is looped into all of this. That's a water pressure issue. It's not a capacity issue so much as a water pressure issue. And that's something that we've all known about for a while, but the Barnes is being built out, and so it's kind of come to a head with the project that they're working on over there. So there are a lot of topics that kind of have come together to push this conversation forward, and we're moving it forward now, so that's a good thing. So we'll try to cover, you know, it's like eating an elephant, like one bite at a time, and we'll go from there. So I'll hand it back to you, Liz.
Thank you. I have the next three slides. And again, not to repeat too much here, but the context of why we're here is ongoing discussions between the city and Garfield on key water issues. And our broad objective is to address outstanding water-related matters to ensure effective planning and service delivery. The primary topics for discussion tonight, as Lauren said, outstanding pending Act 399 permits, bulk water agreement, and future capacity planning, the Rec Authority Commons Area Water Pressure Project, and it didn't make the bullet, but Long Lake Expansion, which was already mentioned. And I think this is a really good graph, just to show where we stand with our plant capacity. The water treatment plant can produce 20 million gallons of water per, per day. That's the MGD. The actual transmission system can push out just slightly less than that 20 million that it can pull in. 5 million gallons is the reserve capacity under the current bulk water agreement for Garfield Township, 1 million gallons for Peninsula Township, .75 for Elmwood Township. The city has a reserve of 10 million gallons per day, and then we have a plant capacity of 2 million gallons, and that equals 18.75. That, that's allocated amongst those contracts. And again, the total that the plant can produce and push out is just under 19 million. And I think, you know, when you come to the table to meet with folks, you should always try to start with, where do we agree, or where can we find agreement? And so I wanted to talk about those common acknowledgements and the recent progress we've made in having discussions. We, there were agreements to release four pending Act 399 permits in Garfield after conferring with Eagle, agreement to release the joint Rec Authority 399 permit application for water pressure, acknowledgement that expansion into Long Lake did not meet required approvals, and consensus that future water system expansions would require city approval, acknowledgement that new master meters will provide daily collection to guide future decisions, and recognition that irrigation management and water conservation should be discussed as a part of a holistic conversation, and shared goals, ensuring adequate water supply for both entities, improving infrastructure for accurate flow monitoring, and addressing concerns about peaking factors and system capacity. And certainly anything that we work on for one of our bulk water will, will help the others. So. I'm gonna turn this over to Lauren, and the next two slides are on the township proposed solutions that came to us, as well as where we stand with the Rec Authority and Commons Water Pressure.
So we had a couple of really productive meetings with Garfield leadership. And what came out of those meetings is kind of the acknowledgements that Liz just talked about, but also Garfield came to the second meeting with some proposed solutions, which was a huge step forward for us. The first one was, you, you have a letter in your packet that came from Garfield, where they had requested 8 million gallons per day. And we sat down and, you know, it's an educational process, and they didn't know that we don't have another 3 million gallons coming from the plant. So we all learned. And we do have 1 million gallons that is unallocated at the plant right now. And so at that meeting, we talked about that request being modified. So instead of the 3 million that had been requested, 1 million additional, the unallocated 1 million to amend the contract with Garfield and add that to their contract. We, they talked about all existing and future permits, except those in Long Lake Township, being released. We did end up agreeing to release the four permits that were pending in Garfield for developments. They've been pending for quite some time, really since these discussions started. And after conferring with Eagle, we were confident that releasing those permits would not jeopardize our system at all. We can supply that water to those, so we went ahead and, we had done that. And also, I'm losing, I'm losing the thread, sorry. Oh, we've got some issues with the, the meters on the edge of town that meter the water going in and out from the city to Garfield. The main meter has been replaced on CAS, but there are other, several other meters that need to be replaced. And we agreed that that would be prioritized, and that that is coming down the pike this spring. The meters were ordered, and we have them. They've been delivered, we being, I think BPW has them in hand. And it's being prioritized to make sure that those are in place this spring. That will allow us to have basically up-to-the-minute readings on the water that is coming through the system. And that should alleviate the issue of the peaking factor that we've been talking about with Garfield, because we'll have actual reads on the water. So monitoring, monitoring that daily usage. And that Garfield will also, they're looking, they've told us, at additional storage options. And what that does is really allow water to be stored, like in a tank or a water tower. That really calms the peaks. So instead of pulling directly from the plant, if there's a high need for water, usually in the summer months, it could be stored, and then that really smoothes the peaking, the peaks that would be needed. And you wouldn't have necessarily those spikes in the summer that you otherwise might have. So we do agree that that would help, if they're looking at that. Formalizing the agreement for the existing customers in Long Lake Township, this is the extension that went out Cedar Run Road, that, those customers, it's one neighborhood, about, I think, 100 residential units out there. And there's not an appropriate document that really covers those customers right now, because it shouldn't have been done that way. We agree with that. You've known about that as well. We need to get that covered by an appropriate document, and I think that we can work toward that. And then further analysis is needed about the Rec Authority Commons Area going forward. We agree with that as well. That's the next slide. And the reason that, well, I guess I'll, I won't skip ahead to the end. So just to speak a little bit more about the Rec Authority and the Commons Area, this is really a priority at this time, because the project is imminent, and it is tied to a number of sources of funding, that if they don't get their CFO, once it's been completed, could become an issue. And the reason that it's tied to the CFO is because the low pressure in that building, that, that can't be supplied with enough pressure as the system exists, doesn't allow for appropriate fire flow, and even things like flushing toilets. So it's really important that we get that project online. It's a joint Rec Authority. It's joint between the city and Garfield, and it's coming as a request from the joint Rec Authority. The city's been working for almost a year with a group of engineers and with Garfield also. The city's been working for almost a year with a group of engineers and with Garfield also to try and get this moved forward. And we did hit a snag, but I think with the submission of the permit for that project to Eagle, we've bought a little bit of time with the recommendation to amend the bulk water agreement to add another million gallons per day, which is available. That buys also a little bit more time. And I, and I think that we need to work a little bit more with staff to understand at the end of the day, who is going to really have ownership of that pressure district? It might be Garfield, it might be the city. And we're recommending that, since we're going to have a little bit more time, that staff try to keep working those details out with Garfield. And we'll bring that back to you when we have a recommendation on that. There are other areas around the edges of the city where there are customers that are sort of flip-flopped between Garfield and the city. And the reason for that is just operationally. And a lot of the terrain governs the pressures for water. So it makes more sense for them to be served from one municipality or the other. It doesn't really make a difference other than that. So we would propose to bring you back something to consider about that at a future date. Like I said, we've made a lot of progress, meeting with the new leadership in Garfield. We've leaned on Eagle for their expertise as well. And yep, the township is requesting now one million gallons per day instead of the three million gallons per day. I mentioned the fast-tracking of the new master meters already that will provide us with better flow data. And then for the future, looking at the Long Lake Expansion and the final, you know, resolution of how we're going to deal with the Rec Authority. So I'll hand it back to Liz for next steps.
Thank you, Lauren. This is our last slide. So immediately before the city commission for consideration is the recommendation to approve the allocation of the one million gallon per day to Garfield Township. This would be an amendment to the current bulk water agreement and to authorize the city manager and city attorney to finalize, finalize the documentation for that capacity. Further considerations, and, and we're looking, of course, for direction on how to move forward. Continue to review Garfield's proposals, especially regarding the bulk water agreement. Assess the feasibility of the Rec Authority Commons Area Water Service Transfer that was proposed. Monitor water usage data post-master meter replacements. And again, we'll be able to get daily reads on those new master meters to refine future capacity planning. And then long-term planning. Define the terms for future contract negotiations between the city and the township and ensure mutual compliance with Eagle regulations and system upgrades. And that is our presentation.
We can take questions.
If I've already a chance to sit? Do we have questions for anybody? Pretty thorough presentation. Okay.
I don't see a motion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have a motion in here. Are you just looking for, for any instruction though? Or direction, I mean, sorry?
Well, we forgot to put a motion in the packet. We are recommending that the city would authorize the city manager and the city attorney to increase the, the five million gallons per day in the current bulk water agreement to six, the additional one million capacity.
And the motion would be that the mayor and city clerk could execute that amendment, subject to form and substance.
Joe moved.
Great job, Heather.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second, thank you. And sorry, I'm just writing it so I don't forget. Okay, any further discussion? Go ahead, Tim.
Somebody from that end, just remind us and the public approximately, or whatever the right word is. So increasing the bulk water agreement by this amount and say they're using the amount. Is the city compensated per million gallons sold? Or how does that work? And then we get, you know, 5% on top of that for administration and everything else?
It's not.
So like, we're selling it at cost, essentially.
We're selling it with a factor. So it's not at cost.
At cost plus a factor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
But there's no 5% on it.
Okay, not, but a factor.
Yes.
I was making the 5% up as a.
We have to be careful with numbers at this time.
So it's not that we're, just so the public's aware, it's not that we're just giving them an additional million gallons. Like, they're paying for it.
Right.
And then all our costs are covered, not just the cost of the water, but the cost of your time and your time and your time, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, there's a factor in the current bulk water agreement that accounts for that. And I see.
Supervisor McManus.
Mitch McManus wants to comment on that.
Yeah, first of all, I just wanted to introduce myself to many of you. I'm Joe McManus. I'm the supervisor of Garfield Township. And Chris Barshaf, our, our city manager. And, and of course Jennifer's back here, our engineer as well. So first of all, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come for you and introduce myself. And, and thank Lauren and Liz. We've, you know, for a long time, I think it was 100 days, Garfield and the city hadn't sat down and discussed this issue. And we've made a lot of progress. And it's really encouraging to do that. And the factor is there, I believe it's 40%, I think is what we pay.
I think it might be 42.
Okay.
Ballpark.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we pay more than that. But, you know, this really is, you know, when you think about the contract, it's, it's been there for, we're in our 23rd year. It's, it's lived pretty well. It's, it's actually served us pretty well that we've gotten to this point before we really needed to negotiate more water. So, but we've been bumped up against that five million, excuse me, for a while. And it's about time we really deal with it. So, and I'd be willing to ask you any questions if you may, Heather, so.
Go ahead, Mitch.
Yeah, so I don't know what timeframe to run this back to. So do you have a number, maybe starting a year ago, for how many new housing units Garfield Township has permitted that would be using city water?
I don't have any numbers right now. We looked, you know, the original proposal for the eight million they mentioned was looking at it 10 years down the road. So, you know, when you look at our master plan and everything, I don't have any specific numbers. But we had four permits that were, were sitting since last April. But we have more applicants, you know, coming in as well. So this million will get us under the 80% capacity of the contract, which is a real key number that, that allows us to, to buys us time, as they said, so.
Good. Other questions?
Excuse me.
All right. Thank you for approaching. Nice to, nice to have the introduction. Okay, any other questions or comments from the commission? I'll open it up for public comment on this item then? Does anybody want to make any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and now we'll move on to item number four, which is brought forward by Commissioner Warner and Commissioner Treadwell about future agreements with kayak, bike, and brew in Hall Park. So I'm just going to look to Commissioner Warner to help us here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in to start. Just talked with several people in our community about this topic. And for lack of a better analogy, I look at this like a, an appraiser maybe looks at my house. And there's different ways to figure out what the value is. And so I was hoping that this body, not by a motion or anything, but just by some consensus, could direct city manager to work with staff to bring back to us different ways of looking at what's an appropriate amount to charge. Specifically, this commercial user of our parks, but also future. Because I would anticipate that with Fish Pass and its completion, still a year and a half off, if things go well, that there'll be a lot of, not a lot, there, there will be increased commercial activity of our parks for kayaks and canoes. And so to try to get a, whatever it might be, whether it's considered a policy or something else, I don't know necessarily what the options are, but something that sets us on a path. So we're maybe not fully prepared for that, but at least thinking toward the future. So yes, this specific case, but also additional cases that might be coming our way in the not-too-distant future. And I guess by way of example, as far as what costs, where maybe we're trying to make sure we cover, it would be like, you know, fractional use of an asset. So a particular boat launch and just the wear and tear, et cetera. But I don't pretend to know like how to put a value on that, et cetera. So different ways of looking at it and if something could be brought back to us. And if Commissioner Treadwell has any comments, that's kind of all I had, just to introduce the item.
Yeah, to expand upon that, we do have a river running through town. We have one permitted livery that operates on it. But we have seen interruptions in their use of the riverway over the past couple of years from the bridge construction and now Fish Pass. So those are considerations. Plus, there's the, I'd say the general interest going forward is ascertaining if this is something that we should continue doing. And I would say if, though the contract does extend right now through the season, if there's.
No, the contract ended last season.
Oh, it did?
Right.
Okay. Well, then if we want to have a contract and if, say, going out for bed and seeing what different applicants come through.
Do we have other? I'll open it up then for comments, questions? Go ahead, Jackie.
I, I was kind of stunned at the scale of, of their potential usage. And I, I have no idea how close reality is to the potential. So that's a question to be answered. But if, if you, you know, use their numbers in the current agreement for the dates of operation, the number of, of waves of launching, the hours that they would be launching and how many kayaks per launch. It looked like paddle for pints represented like up to 3,200 launches per season. And that's just 16 dates across June, July, and August. Kayak, Bike, and Brew, because of that exceptionally longer operating season of 24 weeks, was 42,000 launches, maximum capacity. So my, I, my fear is that, that if they were to operate anywhere near that scale, when, when do residents get a chance to use the facilities? That, that's, that's where my, my head is right now.
There's a lot of numbers, yeah, the big, there's big numbers there. And I think, I appreciate Commissioner Warner bringing this. And we had a little bit of a kind of conversation during the agenda review today. And so I definitely think I would say that, you know, kind of what's being asked is asking staff to look into what a policy could be and including fees and per head. And we all, but we, at the end of the day, would also be contributing. I think that's more of the political side of what's our appetite for number of uses. But I think the staff can be instructed to say, whatever it is, we recommend per head or per kayak or per whatever that looks like on other policies that they can look at. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping to seek some clarification from the request as well as the clerk who's historically been putting these together and issuing the permits. So it's March and I'm assuming that the kayak season would start Memorial Weekend.
Typically, yes.
Typically, and the current contract does not extend into this next boating season, kayaking season. So what's the expectation of a turnaround for this recommendation policy slash?
Not expectation, but certainly if some, maybe it's an interim, like, yep, it's a one-year.
Yeah.
To get for this current season, for this current commercial operation and provides time to put more thought, more public input, everything, into what, what's a policy going forward for every, you know, like for everybody. Because, yeah, certainly numbers, that's a concern. So what, what are appropriate numbers, like times a day, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Warner. It is March. And so I think a one-year, kind of not taking year to create the policy, but understanding that the season is coming up pretty quickly here and staff is busy with a million other projects and the budget right now, that asking them to do anything before potentially seeing any of these applications come through is very unlikely. But that we could kind of look at something very temporary and move forward with something more permanent.
And I just want to add that I think, you know, this is obviously a policy discussion of the city commission. This agreement is a five-year agreement. And, and we did share with Mr. Daley, staff did, recognizing it's a city commission decision, that we weren't anticipating bringing it back or renewing it unless the city commission felt it was a reasonable use of public parks and establish some parameters on capacity and those sorts of things. There's a lot of questions related to this, so policy questions. And I'm not saying that to cast doubt or anything, but just it's a pretty thick subject matter. And so I think what would be really helpful is to know from this commission, a consensus of this commission, if you want to have a one-year extension brought back. Or if you want to pause on that. And I think at a minimum, we need to have a study session to get some initial direction to staff. I would have a number of questions that I would like feedback from the commission on in terms of developing a policy. It doesn't need to be a super drawn-out discussion. I'm not prepared to have it tonight to be effective, but.
So are you saying though, that you've already had the conversation with, you know, Try Daily or the Kayak, Bike, and Brew, that they probably wouldn't be getting passes this year already?
Yes.
So they're prepared for that?
A few years ago, I had shared that. Recognizing it's not my final decision, but that I wouldn't be bringing forward a renewal, a status quo renewal, at least not myself, so.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Heather.
During the reconstruction of the dam, is it even viable to have this operation going this year?
We have, there are potential workarounds. And that's something we could work out with Mr. Daley, if that's a desire of the commission. But it's, that Fish Pass alone isn't necessarily a reason not to do it.
It can operate in the section upstream of the Fish Pass. It can operate downstream.
I'm all for just letting it sit by itself, all alone, not doing anything for a while. Until we have a policy.
Mitch?
Yeah, so I would counter that with saying that there is some value in enjoying our waterways. I am perhaps.
We're not saying that we can't enjoy the waterways.
I am perhaps the person that paddles canoe and kayaks on the Stretch River more than literally anyone.
Yes, but this is paddle for pints.
Mitch does have the floor right now. And then I'll definitely go to you, Heather.
And yes, you can say that there are concerns about numbers. But it's one thing to say the maximum number. It's another thing to say what that amounts to on the ground, both between construction projects and considering not every day for the day of the week that it is, the weather that day, what other events are going on in the community will necessarily get at capacity or even anywhere close. There are plenty of times when it might say, here's a day that 200 people are going to go down the river and I can be paddling and see eight.
Commissioner Warner, you did bring this forward and this is a different kind, you know, this is some context to the conversation. So like what, because you brought it forward, where are you?
Well, I guess, like I, I'd like to see us at least make an attempt to get a permit in place for this season. And to me, it's both the, like the dollar amount that seems palatable slash appropriate by this body as well as numbers. And I can't say, like in a study session, I can't say, oh, you know, 100 per whatever time unit makes sense. Like, I have no basis to, so I'd much rather, like, maybe Mr. Treadwell can, like, work with staff to recommend numbers that seem appropriate. But I, I don't have a basis for numbers. But to me, that's, those are the two things, like capacity, for lack of a better term, but numbers, like per day or per hour, whatever it is, and dollars. Like, those, those are the two things to be worked out, in my opinion. Yes, it takes time. Like, do we look to other examples? I don't know.
So I'm going to actually turn to the city clerk now on this of, again, with the request that's out there, potentially even wanting to make that viable for this year, but also your staff and your time right now. What's your capacity and what you think you could actually do, knowing when these permits would usually be requested and filled as well? So kind of, you're the expert on this, even though the expert for the, the number of heads and the cost would be something we'd have to dig into. You know the process though. So what would your thought be right now?
I think then I maybe would just like to say. I think then I maybe would just like to sit down with Mr. Daley, if that's the will of the City Commission, and refine the actual needed capacity, needed, desired capacity from him, and discuss that internally, and have a fee that is probably pretty similar to what we've been charging for this year. And then, you know, if it's, if it's a desire of the commission, we can work on a policy. But again, I would want to come back to the City Commission with just some high-level questions to begin working on that policy, because there's many directions you can go in. And just to get maybe a half an hour, an hour's worth of discussion from the City Commission tops with potentially public input if desired by the public into that policy, obviously. Initial thoughts, there'd be lots after. But it's a, it's a pretty big-
Yeah.
-nut to crack.
And, and that's why I was kind of asking for the difference of what would it take this year if there was a desire to allow them to function in some kind of way versus the creation of the entire policy? So that's kind of where I wanted to check in as we're directing.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's something that we could work out with Mr. Daley probably in the next month, if there's a desire to have a renewal. And then a policy is a months-long, probably-
Oh, for sure.
Several, several months-
Yeah.
-of work. You know, not active work, but, you know, periodically.
Yeah. And that's why I bring that up, because I share the concerns about the usage and the waterways and wanting to make sure that we get to the right fees. I also know that we're already getting into the time where businesses are starting to hire for the summer, and several of the ones that do this are already planning probably the day shifts around what their usual traffic kind of looks like. And day shifts can look really different when you've got two different groups of forty people popping in versus not at all. And so I, you know, again, lots of concerns about the numbers and where we're going in the future, but also very cognizant of the time right now and kind of the, the impact on some of the local businesses and such. So kind of trying to frame that as how we're moving forward with the commission's will is really what I'm looking at. Mitch, you've got your hand up?
Yes. For a one-year period, we are in a rather different scenario than when the applicant first applied, that Fish Pass is literally dividing the river into an upstream or downstream section. Yes, you could theoretically portage the two blocks around it. I have done that multiple times. But that's impractical for operations, at least for a one-year renewal. If it's, say, just operating upstream of that and able to connect to Hall Park, to the kayak launch on Boardman Lake on the far side, that is certainly a more limited scope compared to if we're developing a policy going forward, that would be looking at a post-Fish Pass scenario.
So would we be wanting, as a commission as a whole, to empower, knowing that we have this policy coming forward, Benjamin to enter into discussions with Kayak Bike and Brew on a scaled-back version, being cognizant of both, of the construction and everything else? You know, it's somebody else's business, and it's our permitting. So I don't think we're up here to tell them how to run their business for the summer, but to kind of give some scope to, to Benjamin, so he doesn't spend time working on an agreement that we're just not even going to want to agree with in the first, once it arrives to us, understanding that following that is going to be a much more robust policy with a lot clearer guidelines and, and framework. Is that kind of where we're landing? I'm hearing from some people, but not everybody. So go ahead, Jackie.
I would, I would support Benjamin having the conversation with the vendor about, you know, a scaled-back approach to the 2025 season. I would also empower Benjamin to develop a plan for public outreach and try to figure out how we can get, take the pulse of the people who are most impacted by this. So residents nearby the path that they follow, other small, small craft owners who may be impacted by use of the launches. So I'd appreciate us sort of starting to think about that also.
Are you, when you say public outreach, are you referring more to the-
Policy.
-policy discussion versus this one-year extension?
Yes.
Okay.
So that our policy discussion can begin with-
Right.
Some information. Public input.
Yeah, great. Go ahead, Heather.
Does this all involve drinking? This is all kayaking, biking, and drinking, right?
That, that is the, the nature of their business model, yes.
I, I feel that this kind of tourism is harmful to Traverse City, and I don't support any of it.
Okay. Other thoughts? Just trying to weigh in to make sure we're not having Benjamin.
No, I'm fine with, I agree with Commissioner Anderson.
Okay, great. I agree. I have a vigorous head nod from Commissioner Stanley as well with Commissioner Anderson's thoughts. Okay, so that, I think that's where we're at with the commission right now, is have a discussion about what the summer could look like for a one-year, and then you, as the kind of officiant, starting to investigate a policy that then will be brought back to us for more questions and details to help you kind of fill that out in the coming months.
Yeah, that's clear enough for me.
Is that good by consensus? You don't want a motion or anything?
No, I don't need a motion. Thank you.
Is that good with everybody? Okay. For the, what you vote later is your choice, but for the instructions. Okay. So that, I think, does that satisfy where you wanted to be, Commissioner Warner?
Okay, with that, we will move on to-
Offer a public comment?
Oh, sorry, we didn't have a motion, but yes, I should have a public comment. I apologize. That was my usual indicator. So, sorry. Please feel free to approach the podium.
Hi, Richard Robbins, 720 Center Place. I'm here as a resident, not representing anybody. I live on Boardman Lake, and it is, it's a reality. We like to use our waterways. I would just ask that the policy discussions, and the policy gets put into place, also incorporates a very robust procedure and policy for operators of these types of businesses to educate the users about proper behavior, not littering. I mean, one of the things, I, I too kayak a lot up and down the river. And so the idea of beer cans in the bottom of, of the, of the river, every, it's not bad, but I would just, you know, by, by and large, people are pretty good. Every so often, you just get a really bad group that are littering, boisterous, very, well, they're very drunk. And so I would put it upon the policy of the city to, to request that these operators, you know, have some sort of a process, you know, to manage that. And, and to educate them as to if, you know, if you want to come back, you know, here are the things that the city requests that, you know, is proper behavior. Because, again, we want to have a good city, a good experience for all people, not just those on the river. So anyway, that's just a thought.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Nielsen, 1222, 223 Randolph Street. What I'm remembering is not too many years ago, down in the open space, we had groups, commercial groups, that wanted to make, you know, money. And so what they were doing was every single weekend renting the open space, because it was very reasonably priced. And we had those lovely snow fences. They're often some kind of fences, so they could, you know, charge for people that entered their space. But what it meant was, we, the public, that paid for that open space and maintained it, didn't have access. And we finally did come to the city, and we asked them to please, can you have, set a policy to at least allow us once a month, twice a month, something on, on some kind of regular basis, make sure that we locals also had the ability to enjoy a public park, an asset of our city. I see the Fish Pass as a similar thing with the kayaking or whatever. And so I would encourage you, as you make a policy, that you make sure there are days and times when locals have access. And to, I forget who said it now, I think it was you, Heather, it should be times in place, a place where families can go, as well as the drinkers that are in this world. And so try to find a balance between all different kinds of users, but particularly us locals, because, you know, you could sort of, you know, we could be closed out of, you know, wonderful part of our community. And, and that seems kind of unfair, that we don't have a right to use it some of the time, too, without having to pay for it twice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Troy Daley, I'm the owner of Kayak Bike and Brew. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for, to speak tonight. I'm Troy Daley, owner of Kayak Bike and Brew. For over a decade, we have been a part of Traverse City's identity, offering a unique recreational experience that connects the residents and visitors with the beauty of our waterways, trails, and, and local businesses. Since securing our license agreement with the city eight years ago, we have paid over $245,000 in rent, directly contributing to the community. However, in the past, in the past five years, while due to the construction, including all the bridges, roads, and the Fish Pass project, our operations have been significantly limited, reducing our customer numbers to a fraction of once, what they once were. And despite these challenges, we remain committed to adapting, growing, and giving back. Our team consists of local, local full-time employees who rely on this business for their livelihood, and we continue to support the economy through our partnerships with, with heart trails and local businesses, sand city organizations like, you know, the police and fire and EMS that we've hired in the past, and our river stewards. And looking ahead, while we do seek a, a, a license renewal that gives us continued access to Hall Park and Union Street Dam, made temporary use of American Legion, Legion Park during the Fish Pass, and ongoing collaboration through our, our, our pre and preceding and, and postseason meetings with the city, city and Parks and Rec Department. Our focus remains on sustainability and reducing our impact while increasing the value for the city residents through recreational access and unique experiences. We appreciate your time in consideration and the ongoing partnership as we move forward. And I just wanted to answer a couple of things that were all brought up, is the agreement that you have in front of you was created in late 2018, early 2019, like, all before all the construction that ended up happening. And when I created that, we asked for everything, because I didn't know what the business was. Well, after all this construction and everything happened, our numbers significantly dropped. Last year, we had 2,200 people overall for the entire year.
Mr. Daley, thank you for your comments. Thank you.
I'm Justin Reed, 63, Kajis Drive, Permit 1B. Got a question. How can you tell between a kayak tourist and a local tourist? How would you police that? I mean, I guess, you know, it's good to stand, to have a policy and, and look at those things. But if that policy is in the direction of trying to police between what the tourists are here and what the locals are here, I'm sorry, you're going to have to mix your both, because the tourists go ahead and they support our economy here. There's no way around it. So, you know, one thing is that we haven't had really any other major events in Traverse City. We used to have events, but we don't have those anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Apologies again, we didn't have a motion. That's usually my mental thing to have a public, or a public comment open up. I want to thank everybody. A lot of the points that were raised, low impact, high impact, the, the future with the post-Fish Pass, if we will, construction, I think will all be part of the bigger conversation we'll have when Benjamin brings us the policy questions. But I want to thank the commission for giving staff a little bit of direction here to see what our will is for right now and looking to the future. So thank you all for that conversation. And Mark is ducking out now, but I want it on the record that he said he'd be, he was interested in serving on the two-way ad hoc we're about to talk about. So he's not getting out of it just because he left. So with that, we will now move on to appointments. And we have the two-way State Street pilot here. And this is the ad hoc that we had requested as part of the conversation about the renewal of the, what do we call it? Pilot. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. Yeah, so the board approved the extension of the two-way State Street pilot through December 31st of this year with the recommendation of having an ad hoc committee. And after the board made that motion and voted, we had a brief meeting of staff to discuss what that would look like and what, what would be the purpose of that ad hoc. And part of that motion was to bring it back in a meeting in March, and this is the meeting in March. So we have two ad hoc committees currently up and running right now, the Brownbridge Trust Fund ad hoc, which is to recommend ballot language for City Commission consideration regarding the Brownbridge Trust Fund and, you know, a list of, of parks or however that's going to go to, to the voters. We have a Complete Streets ad hoc. You know, the goal is to create a policy for potential adoption at the City Commission level. We're about to start with the Ethics Ordinance ad hoc, which is to create a policy for, hopefully, an ethics ordinance for potential adoption by this body. And then a Board Rules ad hoc that's about to get started, too, which would cremate, create, amend, or edit board rules for, again, potential City Commission adoption. So I'm seeking clarity on what the goals and objections would be of the two-way street ad hoc. So is, is the goal to review data and then to make recommendations? We're just, we're seeking clarity to make sure that we have, we, we understand what the marching orders are of that ad hoc. And again, you've got a lot of staff on all these different ad hocs. When I first started, there were none. Apparently, there used to be quite a few. When I first got here as your new city manager, there were none. Now there are four. And so, you know, I just want to make sure we, we understand so that we can make progress and we're on the same page.
Commissioner Warner, you already put your hand up.
Yeah, if, if this is to move forward, I would recommend that the ad hoc be there to largely advocate for pedestrians and cyclists. That seems like it's an area that could be strengthened, you know, from what has transpired the past two years. So making, whether it's making recommendations or some other approach to it, but advocates.
Other, other thoughts? Okay. That's what you'd like to see, too, is the focus of the ad hoc is, so we'd have, and I'm just clarifying what the expectation would be as things are coming and going. So the DDA and the city are doing the two-way pilot. They're kind of doing the data and the other things that are, that have been already outlined in that. This ad hoc would need to discuss, kind of look at some of that through the lens of pedestrian and bike friendliness, and make recommendations or give back input. Is that what we're, I, I'm looking for that to start, and then we can have more conversation. But just don't want to lose anything as we go. Okay. And Mitch, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd also say, you had mentioned analyzing data. We will have data continually being produced through the process. But as we, especially the weather warms up and driving patterns change slightly, we might find new sites, sources of data, or new specifics that we want to look at as, to see how it's performing.
Okay.
Ways that the pilot can be refined.
Yeah. Any other thoughts of what the expectations are from the ad hoc? Okay, so really kind of, we know that this project is going on, and this is really just adding a, a specific lens that we're looking to see some of the information on when it is all said and done. Okay. Does that help?
I think that-
Into the mic, into the mic, please.
Oh, I think that helps. Can, did, so I'm hearing advocate for pedestrians and cyclists and analyze the data that's being collected?
Great. Okay. Do we, we don't have the ad hoc.
We can have the, if it's the will of the commission, you can have a motion tonight to establish the ad hoc.
Do we want to establish it now?
Define the scope of the ad hoc in that motion.
Yeah. Okay, so Mayor Proton Wilson would like to, but are there other commissioners that would like to volunteer? Commissioner Treadwell?
Commissioner Treadwell?
Okay. Any other commissioner? Nope.
I'm already on two.
I know. That's where I was like, we're all very extended. So, I mean, I'll serve on it as well, then, to just, and then we can do updates through our reports of anything that might be discussed there and, and share that out as well. So what does that motion sound like, Benjamin?
That a City Commission ad hoc committee be established for the two-way State Street pilot to review data and make recommendations on pedestrian and bicyclist accessibility with blank to be appointed to such committee.
Well, I think it's going to be Mitchell Treadwell, Mayor Proton Wilson, and myself.
Okay. Okay. And then who is the chair of the committee?
I'll just be chair, I guess.
So we just need a motion.
Who wants to make, who wants to make that motion? Who wants to make, who wants to make that motion? My Stanley with her big voice, and we'll have Heather Shaw second it.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Go ahead, Tim.
Just by, like, by way, by way of example, easier for me to say, like, what's in my head is, so if, say, there's discussion during the pilot this coming year about adding a turn lane, whether it's right turn, left turn, whatever, a turn lane for motor vehicles, there can be a voice that says, okay, but for pedestrians, like, because too often it seems that that becomes tertiary, maybe secondary at best, but.
If there's a left turn lane for cars, how does a bicycle execute that same left turn?
So just to, to make sure that we as a community are reminded of the full discussion. Thanks.
Great, yep. Any other comments?
Just that, um, there was an MDOT. Did anybody else watch any of that MDOT, uh, presentation? It was last week, went on for like two days, five hours each day. Oh my gosh, incredible amount of information about how to get across the street if you're not driving a car.
Wow.
I think our engineer, Anne Pagano, watched it. I saw her name up in there.
Oh, great.
And you can get links to it, it's amazing. So the data's all there about different ways of safely getting bikes and people across streets with cars.
Could we make a little note of that, that maybe that's at least sent to the ad hoc, if not the entire commission? Great. Any other input right now? Okay, seeing none, I'll open this up for a public, wait, I do have a motion in a second. Yeah, sorry, it took me a second. Okay, open this up for public comment, if anybody wants to make public comment on this item.
Richard Robbins, 720, I'm Center Place, I'm coming as the representative of Grand Traverse State Streets Alliance. I have, I'll be presenting to you on the seventh some pretty exciting news, but, um, I, I think that even in an advisory board, at an advisory level, this is really important, even at a higher level than an, an ad hoc. We have now secured some, um, pretty exciting visualization expertise, engineering expertise, that we would like to bring to the table to the ad hoc as a member of the ad hoc, and we'd like to be part of that because, um, I think we can reimagine State Street and Front Street to be a whole lot more pedestrian, wheelchair, disabled, uh, and bicycle friendly as well as runners, where we've had several accidents that are unreported on many of these corners, not just ones that are, that have been reported, but people that have been run over, runners, you know, by cars taking turns. And so, uh, we'd like to really be part of that to, to bring this expertise that we can bring in a pro bono, uh, uh, fashion to the group so that we can start developing some real smart decisions around State Street other than moving cars. So, anyway, we're looking forward to it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
It'd be wonderful if we had it like in the 2019 with the COVID where we closed down Front Street, um, between a couple of blocks. That was a very awesome and a very great idea, um, and pretty much the business owners enjoyed it too, um, because it was able to get more people downtown. It was, made more money for the business owners, um, with the additional capacity of the restaurants. Um, and talking about, uh, safe, the, um, Complete Streets is there is a Complete Street on Southern Street that is a, um, bidirectional bike lane. So when you're leaving from the hospital there, and you're going down on Southern Street and you get down past the light, there is a, um, a couple of bollards that are right there, um, and I think that is pretty much a very successful story on what a Complete Street can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Harry Burkhole with the DDA. I'm hoping that maybe we can further expand this discussion a little bit about kind of the decision point of the ad hoc committee, and maybe I'm overcomplicating this and it's just a, an advisory committee, but the decisions on this two-way pilot have been made by staff consistently for the last two years, so if we could have a little bit more clarity on when this committee meets and their decisions and how that impacts the kind of day-to-day decisions that staff has been making over two years, I think would be helpful kind to the collective, so.
Yep. It's public comment portion, so, thanks, Harry. Okay, any other public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. I think, um, you know, the request of where and how, you know, how this interacts with the decisions already being made can be established with the, the ad hoc that's now here, and we'll, we'll follow up with that. So, any other comments from the commissioners before we call a vote? All right, call the vote then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, on our, um, appointments here, we have the, um, Brown Bridge Advisory Committee, and it doesn't say who the chair was, so, um, if you had.
I, I'm happy to speak for us.
Great, go for it.
I, we, we had the luxury of two very highly qualified candidates for this position, and, um, it was a difficult decision, but we're recommending that Cheryl Pavek Henner be appointed to the term expiring October 4th, 2027. Seat previously held by Denny Scudato on the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee, as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Treadwell, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Stanley.
Thank you. Well, can I get a second?
Yes, I'll second that. And also say that in addition to the recommendation of us, it is the recommendation of the other applicant that we appointed first.
Oh, that's unusual, but interesting. Go ahead, Heather.
How long did Denny Scudato serve?
I, I was just gonna say, like, this, it's gonna be a totally unique experience to not have.
At least 15 years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Yes, and, yeah, exactly, and, and that's kind of hard to imagine, honestly, having the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee without her, so, so she's been impact, hugely impactful in this and really, tons of gratitude to her. So, yeah, for sure. Uh, what were you saying though? Sorry, cut you, we all cut you off in our accolades.
I was going to say how long she's served, but the document I pulled up doesn't have it on there, but it's been many years.
It predates our digital documentation, um, so, much appreciated to Denny Scudato, without a doubt. Um, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Um, so yes, much appreciated, we'll get that out for that. Reports and announcements going down, we'll start on the end. Any reports? Looks like you're going to grab some paperwork. Okay, go ahead.
I know, it's late, but I'll be really quick. Um, Complete Streets, we've had a meeting, we've got another one coming up, we're finalizing, combining drafts on the Complete Streets. There is a, we are considering a recommendation of a 1%, um, a 1% what would you call it? Funding from the bonus to, uh, from the bonus, from the budget to fund improvements. Um, we're also considering a recommendation to form a Complete Streets Advisory Board. Or maybe it's incorporate that into what used to be the active, active transportation. Arts Commission, we had 104 applicants.
That's amazing.
Something crazy, we actually got through all of them in about two hours and made our final 15 picks, and we are narrowing, narrowing that down to six or seven on Wednesday. And Brown Bridge Trust, I'm meeting with Benjamin on Wednesday, we're trying to get some kind of verbiage about, that we can present to community organizations about how to manage a trust were we to establish one.
Great.
And the trust would be to help qualified local residents improve their properties, ADA accessibility or other things.
Great. Good updates, thank you. Go ahead, Jackie.
And just to note that tomorrow evening, the Planning Commission is holding a special meeting, uh, starting at 6:00 PM, and there are two real important issues on the agenda. One is the, um, special land use permit for a year-round safe harbor, uh, and that is being recommended for approval with, um, conditions involving a pedestrian sidewalk.
Okay. Take one, wait, no problem.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Also, the, um, there'll be introduction of a zoning amendment that would reduce the percentage of short-term rentals allowed in some C, D, and I districts. So I refer everyone to the packets for details on that, and if you can be there and offer input, that would be great.
Thank you so much, that's great. Um, I'm gonna guess that Commissioner Stanley cannot give a report right tonight, apologies. All right, so with that then, I will move to final public comment, which is open public comment, you can comment on anything that you'd like, it doesn't have to be anything that was on the agenda today.
How y'all doing? Well, yeah, I'm, I'm really here just to kind of remind people looking at home, people up on the board here that this guy over here, some other people, you know, they don't want, they want to kick out my friends at the Pines, and, uh, that's unacceptable to me. I got a little bit of a letter I'll start off with. It says, "Dear esteemed members of the city commission, I am contacting you to express my despair over the city's announcement to evict and displace residents of the Pines. No camping bans are a clear attack on the most vulnerable members of our community and criminalize homelessness. Instead of working to evict the Pines, the city should focus on finding solutions with residents of the Pines. I ask that the city commission refrain from further discussions regarding the Pines without first consulting current residents of the Pines. Although the city is working to increase transaction, uh, transitional and affordable housing, I urge the ci, the city commission to, one, designate the Pines as a legal and free camping area forever. There should be no bans on stolen land, uh, prevent future discriminatory laws targeting unhoused communities. Overpolicing is also an issue in the Pines, with residents frequently being issued citations and fines. You know, citations for trash, oftentimes it's not even always their trash. These fines are an immense financial burden on the residents, and enforcement of these fines unfairly criminalizes the Pines residents when they cannot pay. You know, this is, anytime you fines somebody who doesn't have money, it's just, it's just a prison sentence. I mean, you know, there's, there's no way around that. Asset citations and fines not be used to punish residents of the Pines. And that the city focus on improving safety and well-being of the residents of the Pines, providing, not limited, but including, um, you know, portable toilets, permanent bathrooms with showers, you know, these are, these are like long-term sanitary, you know, concerns people have. People need sharp containers, additional old trash receptacles, I mean, one dumpster for everyone in the Pines, come on, it's a joke, you know? Especially when you guys are still fining people for trash. Come on, dude. Non-freezing fire extinguishers, uh, fire blankets, we, people have asked repeatedly, um, for, you know, help getting, uh, fire extinguishers to people out there. There was a couple fires, you know, this year. I personally knew some people whose places burnt down, so, you know, if you guys could help us or help them, really, like, not experience a house fire in a tent, that'd be great. Um, charging stations, uh, those benches suck, you know, it's a feedback, I don't know if anybody has tried them, but, I mean, they, they hardly ever work. Um, and, oh, lastly, but, you know, not leastly, uh, flashing pedestrians.
Thank you for your comments.
Well, you can finish your sentence if, if you wanted to. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, another, uh, some kind of a, a better crossing at 14th there for people getting to Tom's, you know, is dangerous.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
So I'm, I'm friends with a lot of people in the Pines, built relationships with folks there, um, and like lately, I've been getting phone, like, whenever there's a nice day, they're, I'm getting phone calls or people are coming up to me and saying that the police and the QRT are telling people that they're gonna be evicted. Why on a nice warm day are the police harassing people who are already in a dire situation, stressing them out unnecessarily? Is there actually a date for eviction that has been talked by the commission? Well, cops are telling residents in the Pines this, and this is distressing them. We're talking about people with various problems that it's the last thing they need. It's a serious concern. The other day, uh, again with the fines, um, someone got, they had a 24-hour notice to clean up their camp, it was an elderly man. Um, we came, we helped him, um, he was just saying like, you know, this is my community, this is my home, this is my neighborhood, I love it here, I, I love the community I have, I love that I've been able to get closer to finding permanent housing by being here. And like, I think that has to be factored in. One, safe harbor is not, it's not a, it's not a solution, we, we've all said this multiple times, multiple meetings, that's not a real solution. It's a good, it's good to have emergency housing, emergency shelter in place, which is great, but these people need, they, they need a neighborhood, and right now, the Pines is a functional neighborhood. It may not seem functional to a lot of folks in this community, because they haven't like, I don't know, they've, they've just like, you know, displaced these people on the margins. And to pair like, well, you just said, like, all those things are very well needed, there's, there's not toilets, like, people have to go to like Tom's and stuff. The crosswalk, it's so dangerous to cross to, to get to, to food or to use the bathroom at Tom's, which is a reliable thing for folks since there are no toilets. I mean, it, there, there should be no bans on stolen land. If this is a free country with, and that's, that's public land, people should be allowed to camp there. It's, it's simple, you know, and I think ultimately Pork Chop and his buddies need to stop harassing people on a nice sunny day, they're, they're, you know, it's 50 degrees for the first time in the year, everybody's excited, they're not, they don't have to worry about burning, burning to death in their tent, you know, for the night, and they come out, oh, you know, you better start downsizing, this isn't gonna last forever. Oh, yeah, evictions are coming the beginning of April. These are things we're really hearing, these are real harass, this is harassment. And again, I think it's really important, very important, to remember that he talked about recently just using laws that were proposed here, discriminating against people. Do y'all remember that, like, the vacancy laws that were proposed?
Thank you, I see people behind you would also like to talk, thank you.
Hello, I don't know if you can hear me, but, um, yeah, uh, the Pines wasn't on the agenda, but it's happening any day now, and I feel like it being missing speaks volumes about, you know, these are people and their homes, and they're part of our community, and we're not really showing that we care about them. Um, the, it may not seem like homes to, to most people, but they are homes and they are our neighbors, and the ones that are left there still matter. Um, the, you, a lot of the whole proposal of a new shelter, there are quite a few of them who still won't opt for shelters, and they still have a right to exist and not be pushed further into the margin, margins, so I really implore not just the council, but the community to really show up and, you know, we need to find solutions that are, that are more humanitarian, they're more kind and allow people in the Pines to be part of that process where they have a say, because I don't know how much people have like taken time to talk to them and like, come up with solutions and things with them instead of just kind of infantilizing them and making decisions for them. Um, it's, it's really disheartening, this whole process of like making friends there and then having to slowly just watch them go into a limbo state where they don't know where they're gonna land next. Um, I've, I try to like talk to them about like the future, try to be like positive and think about, you know, things like that, but it's kind of hard to talk about that stuff. They don't know where they're gonna go, they don't have options, that's why they're there, because they don't have anywhere else to go. So, um, I just really want people to consider, you know, even just taking more time to like, let people figure something out even, or let us come together as a community and like, try and solve something. Um, community-owned housing is something I believe in, um, and, uh, I, even then, I still think no camping ban. bans are not the answer, obviously. I think that we need to have more compassion.
Thank you.
Hello, I guess I apologize in advance for not being the most well-spoken person, but I think a few things I want to say is that I think a lot of the solutions, alleged solutions that get tossed around about homelessness, the homelessness quote-unquote problem, is really solely focused on the optics. It's about, it's about homeowners, it's about tourists not wanting to see an unpleasant reality, and I think that a lot of the solutions that we've heard talked about with the Pines, like safe harbor and like suggesting things like Goodwill Inn, things that are known to have years-long waiting lists are not the way to go. I think we're all just looking for, I, I think that the city is looking for ways to just make it more comfortable to the people who they really value, which are the people who haven't been socially murdered, who haven't been completely just tossed aside and no longer are even allowed to function as members of society anymore, not because of things of their own doing, but because of the position that they've been put in. And this is not an individual-to-this-place issue, this is a whole thing, but to me personally, every time I hear a land acknowledgement now, I, I find it a little bit like an odd joke because me personally, in my time being in Traverse City, I've met more indigenous people in the Pines than I have in most other places, and the Pines is a place that's being stomped out, and, you know, what are we really doing for the indigenous people who live here, who again, because of the consequences of centuries of brutality and whatnot, are in the position that they're in now? I just, saying we acknowledge this land isn't really materially helping anyone, and that's all.
Thank you.
Justin Reed, I know that, that tomorrow during the planning commission, that the safe harbor is going to be here. I'd ask that the, that the future, that the planning commission, also the city commission, ask about the involvement with the CCC, the Community Carers Coalition. We haven't heard from those folks for a while, and the reason why I say this is because that whole entire thing in Garfield Township backfired on them because of the zoning issue. And so, with the MOU that's understanding with the safe harbor, it'd be very interesting to see what does that entail, does that entail them going into the other townships for the CCC? I kind of would like to know that, so I'll probably be here tomorrow for the planning commission, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public, general public comment for this evening? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Any final thoughts from commissioners? All right, thank you all very much, we're a little after 10 here, and I hope everybody has a wonderful evening. Oh, and just a reminder, no meeting for the next two weeks because of spring break and 5th Monday, so we'll see you all on April 7th.